He's on his way.
He's on his way. And since he's on his way.
Here.
Fantastic, we do have two members of the public they wish to speak at this time. The first speaker is Ryan Smaller, followed by Mr. Peter Katz.
Let me take this off. Hi. Yeah, there you go. Hi, good evening, I'm going to use this time to address the meeting. My name is Ryan Smaller, I live, work, and play here in Santa Ana, and for the last two or three years I've also been on the city's joint committee with the Chamber of Commerce, known as the Economic Development Council. Mr. Robert Cortez came and visited us last month and told us that this would be the next great opportunity to address the city regarding economic development. I know you guys have some specific ideas before you today, but I just wanted to give you my top 10 list of economic development priorities, and I hope to find any partnership or intrigue in the city or in the public to work together. These are things that I think we're working on, or could be worked on, that could be effective. I apologize, they vary greatly in scope, but there's a lot of great work to be done, and I'm a willing partner for any or all of these. Number one is fast internet and technology. We really believe in any investment in this will result in a giant investment in the community here. Two is to reorganize downtown. Our downtown is a multi-billion dollar asset that is not organized right now to succeed, and we need to reorganize it, reintegrate it, and focus on treating it as such so that we can get to there as a major engine for our city. Three is to finish the branding study. Last October we were told the branding study that the city is executing would be coming back for review, and we still haven't seen it. We'd really like to move forward on that, because lots of processes are contingent on that being delivered. Fourth is to redirect some of the bed tax towards permanent marketing and arts investment for the city. Currently, I think it's being absorbed into the general fund. Five is that any investment in process improvement, updates to how the city does business, is going to result in giant increases of investment in the community. We're told constantly it takes three years or more to open a brick and mortar business in the community, and we want that investment to come here quicker, turn into sales tax revenue. Also, it's time to staff up our inspectors, I think that's something you guys are reviewing tonight. A lot of development revenue is on the table, ready to come, and there's not enough inspectors to check. The city's aware of the problem, and I think hiring is moving forward, but we're very supportive of this. Next is to get organized. There's been great conversations I've had with the council member about, conversations about retail. We all need to come together as a city and see how the world is changing, and how Santa Ana can come together to work together to be that 21st century city. Next is corridor facade improvements. Investing in our corridors is going to result in a major improvement in investment in corridors that are underperforming. Investments in placemaking, being a leader in sustainability and lead, getting more bids going. Downtown has had incredible success with a business improvement district. Long Beach has 11 business districts, we'd like to see more bids, and we'd like to see a council of business areas. So I representing downtown, with my partners, as well as South Main representing itself, other areas where retail and sales tax are being generated, we need to work together to help make sure we're growing. That's it, and I really appreciate the time, thank you very much for all that you're doing.
Ryan. Next, Mr. Katz.
I want to echo some of the stuff that he just said, but I am president of the Comley Board that oversees all 64 neighborhoods in the city here. But look at your budget here, and some of the things that I see, and I was disappointed in the last council meeting voting down the hotel project, because I think this is an underutilized area. We have a great avenue on Harvard Boulevard for development, along First Street, Main Street. But if you look at some of your neighboring cities, for example, City of Garden Grove, 34% of their revenue comes from their bed tax. What is ours, 7%. So there's a need for change here, there's a way we can make some changes. Willowood Golf Course, a number of years ago, I proposed, it's owned by Garden Grove, and Santa Ana rents it. I tried to talk both cities in upgrading it to PGA status, putting a five-star hotel on that site, and bringing golfers out here from the Midwest. That would not destroy the neighborhood, it would qualify for open space for both cities, and it would be a win-win situation for both cities. Harbor Boulevard could use a mini convention center, so that small businesses don't have to pay large prices at the Anaheim Convention Center, which is usually booked most of the time. So comic book conventions, all these little things that can be put out there, can be put on in a mini convention center. The streetcar would bring people out to Harbor Boulevard and to utilize that corridor. So hotels will work over there, all kinds, where you can build hotels where employee residences are built in the ground floor, where they don't have to take their car out of driveway, they don't need to have a car if the hotel is required to build housing for its employees into the hotel's grounds and processes. Your marijuana tax, that should be increased, it's a lot of revenue money there, and you need to start looking at ways to think outside the box and raise more money there. These businesses are making a lot of money, they're willing to pay, and they're willing to pay for a good clean business in the city. And finally, this downtown courtyard plaza that we have out here, you have a joint use agreement with the county and doing nothing with it. That could be used for fiestas, for bringing out food car conventions out there, music, entertainment, where you can bring big entertainers that would pay for a lot of the revenue. And on your hotel bed tax, you need to, like Ryan says, you need to add a branding tax. The City of Garden Grove and Anaheim jointly brand their bed tax, and it pays for all the advertising of their city, the tourist attractions in foreign markets, China, I mean, you see it all over in foreign markets in Europe, in the travel agencies everywhere, advertising the tourist area, and it doesn't cost either city a dime. It pays for all the flyers, brochures you see in the hallway. And finally, I just want to say, I brought this up at the Public Safety Committee meeting, we tried to work on this for about a year, on helping the police on the 4th of July with some additional off-duty officers. We have 85 nonprofits in the city, just let's say we have 100, and we just charge another $5 to their permit fee, you have $500 there, you got $500 from two fireworks companies, and get two more sponsors, and you can hire at least a dozen off-duty sheriff's officers for five hours on that night. So that would go a big help, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Katz. Next, Adrian Muñoz.
Yo les voy a hablar en español, no sé si hay alguien que...
Sí.
Sí, bueno, pues muchas tardes, muy buenas tardes, este, pues yo soy Adrian Muñoz, yo estoy, yo tengo viviendo aquí en esta ciudad durante, ya casi voy para los 20 años, pero yo estoy aquí para poder decirle de que pertenezco a una cooperativa que se llama Santana Producciones de Santana, y pues estamos, yo estoy aquí, ahorita van a venir algunos compañeros de algunas cooperativas, como tenemos cooperativas que se dedican a la producción agrícola, de la producción también de como nosotros en visión, en hacer este cosas visuales para en internet todo, y ese tipo de cosas, verdad, también tenemos algunas cooperativas que están funcionando para, que hacen cosas con el reciclaje, pero yo pertenezco a esta cooperativa que es de producciones, y pues estamos aquí para poder hablar en apoyo a esta ordenanza para nuestras cooperativas, y sentimos que esto es un buen paso para, y exitoso, que debe pues tener un lenguaje pues incluyente con lo que necesitamos en las cooperativas, pero también urgimos a que se incluya pues el lenguaje en esta ordenanza, ya sea para poder desarrollar el conocimiento experto en la ciudad, para la promoción de las cooperativas como una estrategia económica, también utilizar el papel de la ciudad como para convocar la conexión dentro de un ecosistema de cooperativas, y proveer el fondo de becas para incubación y asistencia en enfoque a las cooperativas y redes de las cooperativas. Este, es algo que nosotros pues, ahorita vienen algunos compañeros también, y van a hablar también acerca de esto. Los comentarios van a ser al principio en español, o perdón, van a ser al principio los comentarios, y después se va a hablar esto, o cómo se...
Sí, no estamos ahí, es Action, es un...
O me adelanté.
Es número nueve.
Oh, yo me adelanté entonces.
Sí.
Oh, perdón.
Okay.
Bueno, pues ahorita van a venir algunos compañeros ya, eh.
Okay, está bien.
Muchas gracias.
Okay.
Great. So, a receiving file minutes from the regular finance and economic development knowledge committee from January 11.
So, is it a receiving file, or do we need to move it, or?
It's a receiving file, then number two is approve. We have two.
All right, I'll move it.
Okay, second, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Number two is the approval of the minutes from the regular economic development and infrastructure budget meeting of March 13.
And I'll move it, because I think we are both members of that committee.
Yes, the second, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, and W is not here, so we have selection of chair and vice-chair, do we want to hold that off till he gets here?
Sure, if we know if he's coming.
Do we know?
If he's coming with me.
Okay.
But I'll let you chair in the meantime, so.
Yeah, and also, I know, just took over, huh, and the review of the bylaws, I know.
Good.
And then number five is the 2017-2018 budget plan. Francisco.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Martinez, council member. Before I start there, I do want to introduce somebody, and I know, Michelle, you've already met him, but he is from Kelly and Associates, he is Mark Alvarado, he's the principal there. He, we hired Kelly and Associates to perform an audit or look over our financials as well as our budget documents. He has previously done auditing, he's been an assistant finance director, assistant finance director, and assistant city manager of Monrovia, so he has a pretty extensive background in terms of government as well as auditing. So I just want to make sure that I introduce Mark Alvarado, and you know, he's here, if you have any questions of him, you know, feel free to ask him. With that, I would like to present an overview of the city's 1718 budget and proposed budget plan. We are actually seeking committee direction in terms of finalizing a draft for tomorrow's city's council meeting, so we'll provide an overview in terms of the general fund revenue and expenditure assumptions, and then the plan that currently in place, obviously, this is now to the committee to, if they want to make any changes, recommendations, we're more than happy to include them as we prepare the final budget. So, just as a revenue reminder, for the revenue side of the city's budget, the budget currently includes the loss of, from a budget perspective, the loss of the ICE contract of 11 million, includes a reduction in the water transfer of an additional 2.4 million. The revenue does include the increases associated with our top six revenue sources, which are like sales tax, property tax, utility users tax, transient occupancy tax of 6.4. We recognize additional revenue as it relates to medical marijuana, opening additional dispensaries of 1 million. We anticipate the completion of the citywide fee study in the fourth quarter for fiscal 1718, and we kind of put a placeholder there for 100,000. Now, on the expenditure side, the expenditure side does not include any labor negotiated increase in the current plan. It does reflect a person increase of 4.8 million, includes health insurance costs, the 1.3, includes the increase for the OC fire services ambulance cost of 1.3, it includes the general fund paying for the graffiti abatement program, 1.2, and includes the second year of the third COPS grant of 1 million dollars.
On this increase of the OC ambulance cost, is this our program? Is this the city's program that subsidizes, or is this something else?
This is the care ambulance?
The care ambulance.
As well as the fire contract.
Correct.
Okay.
So the total cost is about 42 million.
The billing for the paramedic subscription program, that item's coming before the city council tomorrow.
Okay. Just want to make sure it's two different things.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, continuing, on the expenditure side, the budget also includes the city's portion for funding the animal share construction costs of 750, an increase to the workers' comp rates, that's 750. We are now financing the final phase or the backbone of the 800 megahertz at 200,000, and it continues the attrition value that was started last year. So as of now, on a percentage basis, this, we wanted to demonstrate that the police department continues to be the one highly funded at 49.7, filed, followed by the fire contract at 21%, recreation at 8%, and so on down the line. So I just kind of want to highlight from a percentage standpoint where all the monies are.
Fran, where does technology infrastructure go under?
Where do we...
Where do you guys put that?
That is going to be listed under the gray...
Oh, that's right.
Uh-huh.
There is...
It's under other, it's a, there's a small, there's about two point, maybe two and a half million dollar transfer that comes from the general fund to the IT budget.
Okay. So that's like 0.1%?
That's a general fund contribution, there are charges back to different funding sources, like the enterprise fund, grants.
If we can just get, because I just think this is very important and crucial as we move our city forward in regards to technology.
So for tomorrow, then, we'll highlight the IT, all the funding related to the information technology.
Thank you, appreciate it, thanks.
Okay. So as you're aware, we had originally identified a 14.4 million dollar budget gap for the current year, with a budget gap for next year of 19.5 million. So I just wanted to remind everybody where we were, where we are basically in terms of the current budget and what we're trying to achieve. We're trying to establish a two-year plan or two-year vision in order to address the city's various issues.
Fran, out of this general fund, our revenues, what percentage of it is grants? That comes to the general fund? Do we know that?
Well, this just relates to primarily general fund revenues.
Just the revenue, okay, okay, great.
Okay, so if we go to the proposed, well, it's not a proposed yet, but to the current plan, in order to look at balancing next year's budget, one of the items that's been identified is half a year of established sheet, or moving from a type 2 to a holding facility, and the cost savings would be 4 million. In terms of the strategic plan, we've identified that the current strategic plan, because it's been funded year after year, currently has enough funds to sustain itself next year, therefore not warranting a new budget of 2.5. So it has currently close to 2.5 still remaining in its balance, so this would mean not...
So are these monies that have not been spent on strategic plan goals?
Yes.
Objectives, and is this just one year, or multiple years?
This would probably be an accumulation, because every year they get it, so.
Accumulation, okay.
But they have about 2.5 in there.
So it won't carry over to 18, 19?
Correct.
Correct, so that means that it didn't get done, it won't get done, if we decide to use these dollars for other things.
Basically, what it means is that over the past two and a half years, departments have not spent all of their monies tied to the strategic plan. Some of it is because they've completed the project, others because they're just taking a little bit longer to complete the projects. So the accumulation of the money equates to 2.5. By allocating those one-time monies, that doesn't mean that necessarily in 1718 they won't have the funds. They will continue to receive an allocation of 2.5 million. I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, good.
So as we indicated, we've identified a million from the opening of dispensaries for the medical marijuana tax full, it's for 1819, and I'll get to that right now, it includes a changing in the ordinance to broaden the, for example, operation hours and such, and so that we will reflect that in the outer year.
Francisco, if I can mention the medical marijuana side, so that 1 million is really just a conservative number based on the changes that we're going to be bringing forward to the city council, first meeting in June, so it's changes of hours, signage, we're anticipating that the revenues are going to be increasing by a million dollars.
So I'm confused.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Andrew. I thought that when we were talking about the adjustment and what the expectation is on the revenue, it was because we had some licensees that were in the queue, and that are going to be operational soon, so is it a combination of both?
It'll be a combination of both, but again, this is just a very ballpark.
Right.
Very conservative number to use right now. Based on the number of hours, I think it'll provide the operators about 40% more opportunity to be open and sell their medical marijuana, so we're anticipating the majority of that's going to be generated because of the hours, the change in hours.
Got it.
So, in addition, with the moving from a type 2 to a holding facility, we, the intent then would be to close the Bureau of Prisons and the marshal's contract, and so we would technically lose 2.5 million from moving to a holding facility, so we would have to include that. And then at the very bottom, we'll have, the city attorney has expressed including some type of ordinance that would recover her legal fees in terms of development, so we put in a place over 100,000 there, which would mean that our budget gap would narrow to 9.3 million, and if you use the one-time monies of 9.3, then you would have a balanced budget. Okay. But this is a placeholder for now, because later on we're going to talk about priorities that have been discussed and talked about, in case you wish to come back and include those additional items within the 1718 budget.
Can you remind us once again what that, what the one-time money amount is?
Yes, if we go to the next page, I identified the, there's 9.1 that came from the ending operating balance, and then the 4.6 are from assigned balances. So if you remember, the 9.1, it's kind of what we referred to originally as the surplus, and then the assigned balances were the other items.
Better turn my phone off.
Yeah.
Sorry.
There was never a surplus, just to let us know, it's really an ending operating balance.
Okay, so if we go, so if we go back to 18, to the previous page, and we look at the budget gap for 1819 of 19.5, the jail holding facility, moving to a holding facility would recognize the full value of the closing of the type 2, and that's 8 million. Obviously, there would be no money associated with the strategic plan. Now we recognize the full value implementation of the medical marijuana changes that appeared to will have occurred, of 1.5 million. The sale of the land up here on Main Street that's related to the hotel comes into play in 1819, that's worth 2.1. At the last meeting, you approved the citywide fee study, that's what we're anticipating. We calculated this at 1.5% of our current total miscellaneous fee, so we would assume maybe we get 1.5%, that's the 900,000 that's shown here. We will recognize the full value of the jail revenue at that time, which is worth 5 million. We've identified other general fund revenue sources, for example, the coming online of two hotels. There's a proposal to expand the parking enforcement, which we anticipate having additional revenue, and that's going to come later, I will show you that later. We will, we also include additional revenues associated with economic development, as well as potential revenues that may result out of jail reuse. Now, that may or may not happen, but there's a plug in there just in case. And then obviously, the legal reimbursement, reimbursement, after the first year, we'll actually be able to realize what the true value that may be, which could be higher or lower. So the adjusted budget gap for year two would be 8.9, we would have the remaining use of whatever one-time monies would be left at 4.4, and you would, in this case, if you wanted to tap into the economic uncertainty fund, the 3.8, which still leaves you a small budget gap deficit of about, less than a million dollars. So the next page, really just...
Can we go back, Fran, before we go to the next page, so just remind me once again, the 2.1 on the sale of the land, which land are we referring to on that?
This is the net development that we have, that they're purchasing, I think it's a property almost in front of the Bowers Museum.
You can invoke it.
Well, that's the one that wasn't approved.
Yeah.
It's coming before the city council, our assumption is that it will be approved tomorrow, hopefully. And so those monies will come in and fiscally...
Well, there's been a lot of assumptions that we had that haven't worked, but, no, I agree, I'm optimistic, and I don't know why it shouldn't have been adopted already, that's really, really disappointing, but, so this is that property, this is that one parcel that's there. And on the 3 million here where it says additional general fund revenues, what two hotels are we talking, is that one of them, the one on Main Street?
Correct. One of them is the Hampton Inn, which is that one, and then there's also Holiday Inn Express.
On, is that on First?
That's going to be on First Street, correct. There's going to be an item on the city council tomorrow night as well, there's a CUP to be approved, and that will allow for that Holiday Inn Express to open.
Got it, and then the, and then the loss of jail revenue, the 2.5 million in 1718, and then the 5 million for 1819, is that the total loss, or is that going to carry over, are we looking at losses in, you know, in 1920, like, I guess that's where...
We would no longer have the contracts associated with the US Marshals and...
So that expires at that point.
Yes.
So I think it's item, let's see, item seven on the agenda, we're going to be going over those jail operations and options.
Got it.
Just to give you a little bit more context as to where the numbers are coming from.
And the economic uncertainty fund, we, with this 3.8, if we use that, does that exhaust what's in there?
Yes, yes, that would exhaust the entire amount. But the intent, as we go through the fiscal policy, the intent was to reserve the actual operating reserves in this, not to touch the operating, we were trying to make it so that we would not touch the operating reserves.
And I know on the fiscal reserve monies, there are protections in there, we have to declare a fiscal crisis in order to access that, for these monies, this economic uncertainty, there are no built-in protections for those monies, right? In other words, we don't have to have any triggers for us to access those monies, it's just council.
Technically, the economic uncertainty was made to balance out any variations that may occur as it related to revenues, you know, primarily the top six, so those are really more appropriate to utilize here. In terms of the operating reserves, there's no true fiscal triggers, as it relates to the reserves, there's no fiscal crisis that's embedded in the, in the policy itself. I think it was more in terms of what, two-thirds of the city council, if they wish to utilize those monies.
So another element of the operating or the reserves is that it allows you to utilize those monies for a two-year period, but with the condition of developing a plan to recover those monies and build up those reserves.
It's just not healthy or prudent to use one-time funds to balance your budget, it's just, it's not a good practice, just, we all know that, that it's not, and so, you know, I think moving forward, I, you know, I'll tell you right now that I'm not in favor of making any amendments to our fiscal policy, I'm willing to support you all this one-time to use a, to do a resolution for one-time monies, but to change the fiscal policy, it would be irresponsible of me to even support, because it's just, it's just, it's just not a good, it's not a good direction that the city wants to take, using one-time money to fill gaps that are unsustainable, you know, we need ongoing sources of revenue to fulfill, you know, these budget expenses, right, unless we actually cut, we make serious cuts, and so, you know, using one-time monies or using these other funds, I'm just, I just personally am not in favor for, but I am willing to do a resolution for this one-time so that we can get out of this crunch and hopefully not get in to these situations again.
No, I think that's a good point, I guess maybe I'm misunderstanding, I thought we didn't have to amend any policies because we're not using those fiscal reserve dollars, right, so, or are we, I guess that's where...
That's an option, you don't have to change the policy that relates to the operating reserves, they would stay as is. The only element that's currently, that currently does not have a use outside the one-time, is the one-time element. The one-time element specifically indicates that you can only use one-time monies for term-specific or one-time expenditures. There is no trigger there that allows the city council to flip that or change that.
So I thought our fiscal reserve had in, you know, somewhere around 40, right?
42.3.
42. So we're going to be tapping into those monies?
No, no.
No, that's not the proposal.
But that's the one that has the triggers, that's the one that has the protections.
Yes, that one has, as Robert indicated, the main intent there was to only allow the city council, if they so chose, to use it for two years. At that point, the city council then would have to deal with the structural problem.
Right, but given this scenario that you presented, we don't have to even access any of those funds in that...
Correct.
In that fiscal reserve.
Correct.
All we're looking at are the, what was once labeled surplus monies, which obviously aren't, but they're, those monies, in addition to the economics uncertainty monies.
Correct.
Right? Why would we need a reso, I think that's to Michelle's question, I mean, is that something that...
Well, the council has to take action, I mean, to use one-time monies, I mean, our fiscal policy doesn't really allow you to use it for labor costs or ongoing operations, so it's a discussion... So it's a discussion at the dais, it would require about two, supermajority, so five votes, to approve the use of one-time monies for this two-year period. For the use of the economic uncertainty, you would also use, need supermajority vote. So it could be done resolution, it could be done at the dais, where it's a decision by the city council giving direction to staff to make those changes. But the next item, so item six on this particular agenda, is to go over the fiscal policy the way it stands and options for consideration.
Got it.
Okay. So page 11 basically just identifies that we will have used the, all the one-time monies if, in fact, council approves the use of one-time monies.
And can you just, for a reference tomorrow, indicate what these monies were supposed to be used for?
Sure.
Prior, so that we know that what's not going to get accomplished or done, so that no one's surprised the following year, why didn't this get done? Well, because we used the money to cover our one-time costs, that'd be greatly appreciated.
So, now going to page 12, okay, so, I wanted to highlight this because in, with the prior interim city manager, as well as listening to the city council, originally we had discussion in terms of including potentially some information technology money and economic development money. So these are not, for example, embedded in stone per se, this is kind of like amounts that were discussed with the prior interim city manager. So the intent originally was to provide information technology, $450,000. The intent of that was to provide, Jack wanted to now begin implementing or phasing in a methodology where he could be able to recover charges from the various departments in terms of the services provided to them. So 200,000 of that 250 really was to implement that, so that he would then now be able to recoup those costs back, and this is primarily from the general fund departments. The additional 250 was for him to implement a project, for example, a citywide project or a specific departmental project that was not necessarily funded. So this would, in essence, give him seed money to begin working on something related to IT for the city. So that was the original intent of the 450. Economic development, economic development was originally identified to provide 200,000 to hire one additional economic development staff member, and then to provide an additional 200,000 for our citywide project. Code enforcement was identified, that was a common theme that we heard in the community, that we needed code enforcement out there. If you recall, last year, we had budgeted two personnel, two individuals for the code enforcement division, but they were tied to the fee study. So if you remember, the fee study isn't going to come in till late, till late this fiscal year, so, you know, one of the proposals was to fund that for, at the, for, fund one officer for this year until the fee study came in, in other words, almost to kick it off, if you will. I've identified other areas, obviously, that we, you know, we don't have labor negotiations in here, we don't have anything resulting from the enterprise review that's associated here, pension stability, I've identified everything here that we've, you know, we've kind of heard, not only from prior interims, but as well as the city council. Now, at the very bottom, I've included funding for a park, one parking permit staff member, and, and expanding the parking enforcement contract. So we contacted the police department, there's been a lot of discussion about neighborhoods not being able to get their neighborhood permit programs going, and a lot of it came back because there was a lack of staffing. So we found out that the enforcement program at night only has maybe about two individuals, citywide, that actually go out and write citations. So the proposal here was to expand the contract, it would be to expand the contract, hire an additional permit parking staff member, and then the revenue generated would offset the cost associated. So we include that, it's, it's neutral, so it depends on whether or not you wish for us to include this in the budget.
Fran, so just to clarify, thanks for the update report, I apologize, my colleagues in the public for my delay here, but just a question, you mentioned that some of the neighborhoods are interested in, what I understood, interested in the permit parking but are not able to secure it because of lack of staffing?
They say that, according, is my understanding, they're about six months behind in terms of processing.
This is for, this is for, for enforcement, so this is.
Two elements, one is the enforcement side, because in order to fund this, you need, you need to generate revenue. So, expanding the contract by one additional enforcement officer would assume then that there would be more enforcement out there, as neighborhoods came onboard, there was obviously more neighborhoods to basically issue citations. So the revenue generated from the enforcement would pay for the additional parking permit person.
Okay.
We, this is not part of the budget, by the way.
No, it's just, these are just identified priorities.
Yeah, or issues that have come up.
Both for staff and council members.
Yes.
And so these are some, just general, this is not to Councilman, or Mayor Protem's point of the identified priorities for those, those one-time monies.
Well, if, if you, if we were to include any element of these, we would have to then adjust the use of the one-time monies. So for example, if you were just to fund the first three, then the, if you went back a page, can you go back? No, two pages. To the 17, that, that one? So the adjusted budget gap would then probably go to 10.3, which means that the use of one-time monies would then go to 10.3, the 1819 would drop to 3.4, and the budget gap for 1819 would increase to 1.7. That's what that means, basically.
So currently, Davi, just to just stay for the record, currently, right now, you have four, five, about 8 million in 1819 that we currently have available today if we want it to use. But then the, the gap would be bigger. So hypothetical, just say, you know, all this here, the council supports and approves and adds more, and it equates to that 8 million, what would be the, the gap in 1819 if we were to take that money, that one-time money?
The, for the identified.
Uh huh. No, 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 for the 1819 budget gap, it's the 19.5, so we would, we would have to find ways to, to, to recover if we used those one-time monies in this 1718 budget, correct?
Yes, yes, so it actually forces the discussion now for 1819, whether or not you're going to generate additional revenue in some manner, or have some major cost reductions in other areas besides the jail. It forces that discussion.
Yes, great, thank you.
So, for now, that's, that's the presentation, so we're actually seeking direction from the committee in terms of whether or not you wish to go with the base budget, whether or not you wish to include any of these other items. And that, like I said, those dollars there were just items, were numbers that were presented back at a point in time, those numbers obviously can change. We can wait until after the fiscal policy discussion and the revenue enhancement discussion, which is coming at this, at later agenda, and then we can come back and revisit this, if you so wish.
I think it's a good idea, because that may change or influence our direction.
I also have some other, just general policy in regards to adding some additional policies for your guys' consideration as well.
If, if, just as a few kind of placeholders in the conversation, I don't know whether they were, whether we would include them on the, on the slide 12, under identified priorities, or to Mayor Protem's point, the one-time funds allocation, however, general plan, you know, updates, for example, it's one of the things on there, our implementation of our branding study, where we have the consultant that's putting together a branding, a strategic plan or plan, however, the implementation of that is the key thing, if we just, anyway, so that's one thing I know that has been. Then the other is more capital in the area of parks, park improvements, skate park, I know it's one of the things that, that the community has been raising. So, I, those are just a few of the, of the items, but specifically the, the two I know some of us around general plan.
Maybe you want to give your add-on to this page 12?
How much time do we have?
Might as well, Fran's writing it down.
Well, I think that, you know, all those, I mean, everything is worthy, and I think we could have a very, very long list, and I don't, I think the whole point is to narrow this list, right?
Yes.
And not to add. That's, that's going to be the real difficulty, because the longer we make this list, I think the more difficult the hole is going to be to try to fill. But I think maybe if we have a lot of options, then we can, you know, pare those down and see what are priorities of the council, and so.
I guess, and my main point for mention, I didn't see it here, yet they have been items that have been brought up, so I, my, it was more, the question, are they not in this slide 12, because, or are they included maybe in here, we don't see them, are they not included for a specific reason, or are these items that were, were being considered one-time, in the one-time funds, if you will?
No, these are just basic priorities that staff identified in certain council members based on their conversations. So definitely, that's why they said you could add more, and then tomorrow, we'll have the full-on discussion.
What was presented as a base budget, and our attempt to try to resolve the budget deficit over a two-year period. If we wanted to add additional elements, just like, like they're listed here as priorities, or if we wanted to include additional funding for branding or general plan, that would further increase the deficit. So it's more of a discussion for the city council. If you wanted to add additional elements, we can do that at this point in time, but just be cognizant that the deficit would grow.
Right. And I, and I think by adding to this list doesn't mean that they're going to be funded, it just means that it makes our alternatives maybe a little bit more difficult to, you know, handle, because there's just many more options, but things I think that should be included for us to consider.
And I think it's important to highlight any other elements that should be considered as a priority, because if new revenues come in that we haven't identified, it becomes easier from a staff perspective to identify what areas the city council may want to.
So, just real briefly, I only have a couple, so, I don't want it to get any longer than that, but I know that when we identified some excess monies, I don't want to call them surplus monies, originally, I know there was an allocation made for South Main, because it included some of the monies that were recovered during the lawsuit, right?
Yes.
So I don't know if those monies can even be used for other purposes, because those monies were tied to the whole, you know, to the, the old redevelopment area, and the lawsuit's there. Is that something that?
The people or case monies have to be spent in South Main, so I think those have already been allocated. Public work staff is already working and, and putting together a plan of action for all those improvements, so that project's already underway.
Okay. Can you do us a favor on this committee, if you can maybe carve out what that is, how much that is, and maybe what the, what the, what the intentions are with those funds? Because I know that there was a whole plan that we had laid out, I think it was in the neighborhood of about 7.5 million, and that was to revitalize that area and make it into, hopefully, another bid, as was mentioned before. So, I know that once these one-time monies are exhausted, how much of that 7.5 million survives, if any? I'm sure some will because of the, because of lawsuit, but if that, Fred, is that something that you can help us with?
Yeah, thank you, council member. The, actually, the plan that was generated cost much more than the 7 million that was allocated, so we prioritize the items that needs to be done, based on, you know, a number of factors, including the public input. And what's going to take place there is urban forest, would be new sidewalks and medians, there would be a number of traffic calming features, and that would basically fill the exhaustive entire fund.
So, so those weren't the, all the suggestions for that, and I know we're going outside the budget a little bit, but, again, to the Mayor Protem's point, all the things that were expectations, right? These, those weren't, those were part of it, but there was more than that, there was, you know, creating two sites, and, you know, developing, you know, doing facade improvements on some of those, so, to the extent we can message that back, or at least message it back to the committee, so we can message it back to the stakeholders and constituents, that would be.
Just to be clear, the stakeholders have been involved in the process, and they are happy with what we're putting in place right now for this phase, but what we feel like by having a bigger scope, we'll be able to get grants. We have an opportunity to get other grants by having the design ready, and then we have that, with that, ready to go.
Well, good. And my last point was to include something on universal legal representation that we've discussed. That number may be, and I think that's before us tomorrow night as well, that number may be as small as we want it to be, or zero, or it could be larger, and I know that there's some funds in the clerk of the councils, monies that we had allocated for public engagement and citizenship affairs and different things that we had thought about, and so, maybe those monies, I think they're in the neighborhood of about 100,000 that we could also use for that, so, thank you.
Great, and I would just ask if you can distinguish the difference between one-time costs for projects or programs, and then what's ongoing, for, you know, like potentially, you know, some of, I think a lot of things they're speaking of is kind of one-time costs, but the things I'm going to talk about, probably ongoing. So I, you know, again, I have, I'm wanting to advocate for smart infrastructure, smart technology, as we move forward, you know, there's been a 30, 37% in reduction in staff, you all are doing three to four people's jobs, and the reality is, is that we're maintaining and preserving the status quo, because we don't, you, you all don't have the resources, don't have the backbone and the, and the infrastructure to provide you the tools that you need to get into the 21st century, right? Before we give anything and provide externally to our community, we need to provide our staff with those tools, so they could be effective and efficient, whether it's code enforcement, whether it's parking, whether it's you all and finance. And so I would just be advocating for us to look at smart infrastructure and smart technology, and I don't know what that is internally, what you all need, I, I know Jack's been working with each of the various departments, I mentioned to Fred, within our CIP, you know, any infrastructure that we make, we should always have co-benefits. I think moving forward with everything that we do with infrastructure, whether it's deferred maintenance, or moving forward with new infrastructure, that there has to be co-benefits, right? So when we are replacing concrete on the street, you know, at the same time, we should be able to put, putting fiber optics, we should be able to doing our sewers, our water mains, on and so forth, right? So those are the co-benefits, and so, though, we have to start thinking and reacting and really moving in that direction, because we need to figure out how we're going to generate revenue, but we're not going to do it if you all don't have the tools that are needed, and so I will continue to push that smart cities concept, and just for the audience and for my colleagues, is for us to, you know, consider really adopting, you know, this smart cities concept, which is solutions used advanced information and communication technologies to collect, communicate, analyze data to improve the design and operations of a city's core systems and program, as well as citizen engagement for greater efficiency and effectiveness, thus improving the city's sustainability, resilience, bottom line, and quality of life. So that's what I mean when I'm talking about smart infrastructure, smart technology. That is a game changer for you all here at City Hall. You know, for us to be successful in moving forward, we're going to need to move in that direction, and so I will do all I can to push my colleagues to get you those tools and resources, so that you all can be effective. And then the last thing that I would just indicate, that I've spoken about in the past that I think our community has asked for and is needed, is how we transition, and I don't know, you know, the park ranger program, you know, as, as we've had those ongoing conversations, we've had reports, will we be able to, to, to hire anyone? I'm not sure, but I think we need to put that down on the list, I know that's what the community asked for. Again, also, more plan checkers and inspectors, you know, in regards to planning how to generate revenue, you know, working with developers and trying to capture our costs and recover our costs, you know, we don't have sufficient enough staff to make that happen, and so we need to find, you know, hire employees that are able to help us recover costs and generate money at this moment in time, based on our financial instability that we face. And so, I also, but I will talk about, as we talked about the fiscal policy, and I wrote it all down, and I'll forward it to you all, some of the changes that I would like to see, as it pertains to our, our budget format, and some consideration as it pertains also to doing a mid-year fiscal review, and making a policy that it should be given to us this mid-year review, every, between January and March of every single year, that has not been set in stone, but I have a lot of other points that I will make mention, and maybe it'll be an appropriate time during the fiscal policy discussion. Okay. Great, so do we want to move that there to the fiscal?
Sure. So now, in terms of the, the city's budget and financial policy, so, the first thing I wanted to do is provide context when we originally adopted the policy, and how, in what context we wrote the policy. So I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, the policy was really developed in terms of dealing with the city, dealing with recessions or budgetary shortfalls in the future. So, as, as, as a reminder, you know, the policy came after the 2008 recession, in 2006, we had 42.9 million in unassigned fund balance, this is kind of interesting, because today we have 43, what?
Forty-eight.
Forty-three point two, I think, in terms of unassigned fund balance. In 2009, it dropped to 3 million. During this time, our sales tax dropped approximately 6 million, that's why we developed the economic uncertainty component of the policy. There was the. Uh, there was the dissolution of the redevelopment agency where we lost a lot of money or funding. Uh, we contracted out for fire services. And in 1112, when we did the reserve policy, we were at nine point four percent. Therefore, that's why we have the range between five and fifteen because we were kind of like in the middle. So that was the context. I just wanted to provide context for everybody. In terms of the policy, so currently, this is the current policy. So in high, at a very high level, the policy states that it strives for a goal of 20% with the minimum reserve level being between five and 15%. Okay? The current value is always, is at forty-two point three as of June 30th, 2016. So that's how much is in the current policy to meet, to attain its 20% reserve level.
So we are at 20% with that forty-two point three?
Currently, but we're gonna, I'm going to talk a little bit about that because as the budget grows, you're chasing the 20%. Okay, the current reserve levels are based on the year-ending operating expenditures. And for the current reserve cannot be used to cover budgetary shortfalls unless approved by two-thirds vote of the city council. But as indicated previously, the one thing we did not write here is that you're limited to a two-year basis in terms of using reserves. That forces the council to have to deal with the structural problem.
Explain that again, Fran, you're limited to two-year basis.
If you were to.
I'm going to give it a try. So the, the intent of the two-year plan is to ensure fiscal sustainability of the city. So if the council so chooses by vote of two-thirds or supermajority to use the operating reserves, the fiscal policy would then require the, the council to develop a two-year plan. So you would then replenish and then achieve the 20% reserve goal over a two-year period. So you would be limited. It's basically, we are, uh, we're making a commitment that although we're touching these reserves at this point in time, we are also committing that we're going to be fiscally prudent and raise the, enough funding or savings to increase our reserves back to 20.
Okay, so it's, it's almost as though we're borrowing from our own funds. If, if we're tapping in, what we're saying is a word.
You could do it that way, yes.
The, the policy actually states that you need to come up with a plan to pay yourself back.
Okay.
I think you should also, I mean, if we're going to be discussing this with our colleagues, some of them don't realize as well that there has to be a declaration of a fiscal reserve crisis or a fiscal crisis, right? Or is that some, or did you list that previously?
The policy doesn't relate to that. I think that intent was more think to going to, I, I want to say it was brought up before by the city attorney in order to take something to the vote of the people. But I don't recall that it's included.
You know, on these operating reserves, I remember that after we were facing down a chapter nine bankruptcy and our monies, you know, were as low as $3 million, we said that we were going to replenish this and get this up to 20% and we weren't going to touch it unless there was a fiscal crisis. And there had to be a declaration of a fiscal crisis.
I recall that.
So I don't know if that's something that, I mean, we could, a two-thirds majority will, will, that's required, but that's one of the elements that's required. But there has to be a declaration of a fiscal crisis as well. In other words, our condition has to be such that, you know, we're looking at, again, another, another potential bankruptcy.
The other thing that I would say to be using, if, you know, the council so wishing gets the vote to support that, I already made mention that I will not, unless it's one-time for resolution purposes. So I just want to state that for the record, is that, because it's, it's not, using one-time funds for ongoing costs is not the prudent thing to do, right? That's what's gotten us in these problems in the first place, right? And so, um, you know, you're trying to hire more cops or hire more code enforcement. Those are ongoing recurring costs, not only pension costs, healthcare costs. There's a compounding effect, right? And sometimes those numbers are not spelled out because we just think, well, it's one-time monies or it's a one-time contract, we'll just be just fine. But the reality is, is that those are ongoing costs. And so, you know, when we're discussing, you know, even contemplating or even borrowing or anything of that sort, having the understanding that if you are going to borrow for whatever reason the council so chooses to, that it could only be for one-time costs, right? It can't be ongoing. And so I just want to make that very clear because, again, these are just one-time monies that are in this account.
So I'm a little worried that nobody remembers that protection in there. So can you check with the city attorney?
Sure.
And look for that language because I'm very clear. The reason why we have a double A rating by Standard and Poor's is because those protections are in there. And it's, it was very clear when we adopted this policy that these monies were not, it's different than the, um, than the other funds.
The economic uncertainty?
Right.
Yeah.
Um, those were outside this fund balance.
Yes.
And so those didn't have the protections that I'm, that I'm referencing. But, you know, if you don't, if you're not familiar with it, Fran, then boy, I'm really nervous, you know, because I, you know, if five of us on the council say, you know what? It's a good idea to use them. It's, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's something that we'll go ahead and, you know, replenish in a year or two. That wasn't all it takes. It takes a declaration of a fiscal crisis, is my recollection. And I do recall that we had a lot of deliberative, you know, discussion on that. So can you check on that for us?
Yeah, I mean, I have the language here, but I will look at every other language that's associated in the fiscal, in the fiscal policy.
Great.
And see if it's embedded, but I do not recall at this time that it was, it was included.
Fran, and just another question for you in regards to the economic uncertainty.
Well, that's the next page.
Yeah, what you're going to be moving towards? Okay, go ahead. But and just in the interest, as you move towards this, my comment is, um, is, is the following, is that, um, using this funds, you're, you're, you're base, basically, you're telling us that we can use this base if there is a structural deficit. But more importantly, that you, this will trigger when we lose the loss of our key, um, sales tax. You said the, the six core. Is there a decrease or there has been an increase in that? And I am.
Sales tax is.
It's been an increase.
Yes.
So why would we even be touching the economic uncertainty? Because we don't, we, you know, we have a structural deficit based on other issues, not based on the six core, you know, sources of revenue of, 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 of sales tax that we're receiving. And so I, I'm just wanting to point that out to you, um, that, you know, let's make sure that what we're saying to, to one another and what we speak about tomorrow, that it's accurate because there's an increase in, in, in our, in our taxes. So if this is gonna, it, it, you pretty much said earlier that when this triggers, it's because there's been a decrease in those sales tax. But this structural deficit has to do with something entirely different.
So there's six revenue sources?
I was going to say, can you, can you, uh, I think Councilman Pro Tem jumped ahead on, uh, on the.
Yeah, we, so let's go forward. And then I'll, I'll, I'll get back to.
Setting the one question.
Mayor Pro Tem's question?
Yeah.
So the economic uncertainty is built that we would build a reserve level between one and 10%. Our current balance is 3.8, which is like a little over one and a half percent. And the economic uncertainty cannot be used to bal, can be used to balance the budget upon determination of a structural deficit by two-thirds vote of the city council. But in terms of when, um, so it can be used for structural deficit. Actually, there is a paragraph that talks about structural deficit. In terms of variation in, of revenue, you could technically say the, uh, it's not the sales tax, not the property tax, but the utility users' tax right now is lagging behind. So that in itself could be a means by which to access the economic uncertainty fund. So you're correct, it's not sales tax and it couldn't be property tax. Uh, but there is language that talks about structural deficits in, under the economic uncertainty fund. And that can be accessed in terms of the, uh, upon two-thirds vote of the city council.
Fran, any, any, uh, other mechanisms or safeguards or, or, uh, requisites for the economic, tapping into the economic uncertainty fund, such as the, uh, the, uh, operating reserve? I'm referencing that the two-year plan, for example, on the operating reserve. Is there anything like that that exists within the?
Yes, yes, actually, there is language and it states right, you know, I'm, I'm looking at the language now. It says authorization, authorization to utilize economic concern, economic reserve beyond two consecutive years is strictly prohibited.
Okay. So, so we can.
It forces council to deal with the problem.
Mm-hmm, we have to deal with the issue.
So it could potentially tap into those funds for two years. There isn't necessarily the, the replenishing action?
No, in this case, we do not talk about replay. It basically says, you're done.
Okay, however, well, I mean.
You have to come up with, you're forced to come up with a plan now. In other words, so if you're, if you have revenue falling for two consecutive years, let's say, let's say sales tax fell for two consecutive years, that's basically a flag that you got a problem and that you're now going to have to deal with as in terms of whether or not it's on the cost side or whether or not you're going to make up the loss of revenue on the revenue side, maybe by doing something different.
The, the, uh, the, the loss in revenue or the, the reduced, reduction in a source of, a source of revenue, such as the, the taxes, uh, that isn't bulleted. It is not mentioned in here, but that is one of the, the requisites, right? That, that.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. I, I would, I would definitely include that, add that in here because it's, and then the two-year, you know, point on the previous slide, I would.
And this is just a red flag, Fred, Fran, and sorry for just, you know, paying attention so much to this. It's just, I, I read the policy. I don't have it with me, but I've read it like 30 times. But I just, on the users' utilities tax, we've noticed when you gave us the, um, the mid-year review that there was a decrease and then you all shared that with us two weeks ago. And so understanding that, right? Because we went out to the voters, right, for this UUT tax, that there's going to be an increase. We're going to generate, you know, some potential revenue. Obviously, I'm not sure when that will start to occur. But obviously with the users' utilities tax, in particular with the electricity, is where there's a decline. And so understanding that and knowing that, that should be a red flag to us. So how are we going to be able to recoup those costs, right? Because that's one of our biggest generators is, is electricity, right? So forget about the rest, but this is the big player in the room. And so as we continue to, you know, our residents continue to use solar, you know, not only that, the corporations like Edison, you know, with the, with the cap and trade and their trade-offs with, you know, there's, there's various things that are affecting us at the state level based on cap and trade with utilities that has put us in this position. And so I would just encourage, I don't sit on the legislative committee, uh, but I would just encourage us to, you know, pay close attention to cap and trade. I know there is a revisit, um, with, 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 uh, the governor and the legislature looking at making some amendments. This is something that needs to come up. It hasn't really hit many cities' radar yet. But, um, you know, I'm already starting to talk about it when I'm in Sacramento because it, it was, it, it's, it's a pretty big red flag, you know, since this is one of our biggest sources of, of generating, um, tax, uh, revenue from utilities. And so I would just be us, for us to be mindful of that because if this is the trend, it's going to continue to decrease. And, and what is that amount, right? Every single year, I think you guys all said, I think it was 6.8 reduction, um, the last two weeks, 6.8. Was that the total that you guys gave us? 6.7 or 6.8 was a reduction, I think. I'm not, I, I don't recall that number, but you shared, you all shared that with us two weeks ago. So just for us to keep that in mind.
So continuing on, um, in the, under the current policy, this is where we get to the general fund operating balance can be considered for, so any operating balances for ex, at the year-end, this talks about year-end, uh, can be considered for term-specific operation or capital needs. There's no other triggers here that allows us to use these monies for anything other than basically one-time items. So that's the key in the current policy. In addition, the current policy does not have any fund balance categories or definitions. That's one of the things we wanted to include.
So I wanted to expand on that as well. And so, um, for me, the carryover forward operating fund policy, one-time funds, you should, you know, I would like for us to consider and looking at using it for deferred maintenance, smart infrastructure and technology, and any potential one-year pilot programs that the city wants to embark on, um, that, that we move forward with, that could be something of good use. For example, the comment that Councilman Sarmiento mentioned in regards to the legal defense fund, always can look at it as a pilot and see how it works for year one. Um, if it, you know, year two, you, things don't work out, then we can revisit. Um, I always think doing pilots are always constructive and, and work, uh, better than trying to put this into a base budget, um, ongoing and not knowing if, if, if the project or not is going to be feasible or even work out for, uh, he, us here in this community.
Okay. So, and then finally, there, what we wanted to recommend was, but the current policy does not has, okay, so that everybody's aware of the calculation of the year-ending operating balance. So that's, that's one item we wanted to expand to make sure that the policy was a little bit more transparent. But currently, it does not have that. Okay, so now if we move, so options. So we're, in terms of the fiscal policy, obviously, it's to maintain the status quo, which is the 20%. So this is what we're talking specifically about, the 20% operating reserve level. Here, right now, we're at the 20%. Given our current budgetary structure, in order to maintain that, we would have to use one, uh, fund balance of 2.6 to meet our next 20% reserve level. So that's the, you know, obviously, the danger of having a cap is you're always going to start chasing the cap uh, because your budget will tend to grow and so the 20% will grow with it. So.
Can't you do a hitting, kind of like a, a, I would say, kind of a range? So based on our, um.
I, the, the thing with the 20%, the, the current policy is, it kind of strives, but when we hit, when we did the, uh, the, when we asked for the rating, that kind of basically created this, this floor for us in terms of the 20%. So, you know, I think.
You got to maintain it, is what you're saying.
If, if you want to maintain the rating component. But it does not preclude, and I think we'll go down and let's look at, for example, let's look at option two. In other words, adjust the current reserve level of 20% to two months of operations, which is the GFOA recommendation. It would do away with the five to 15%. And basically, you would just have one reserve amount at 16.67. It's really two months. That would be 37.4 million. So right now, we're at 42.3 and, and for all intents and purposes, you would have more than necessary for that, for the six, for the two months. But it allows you, you, you can grow into that, though. It'll leave you room to grow into the 42.3 over time. That's one option, okay? The third option is to establish it at the current level. In other words, do it with the 5% and maintain it at 15%. Um, and that's, that value is at 33.6 million. So if you reduce that even further, it'd be at 15%. And then really, the last option is you guys, you know, basically tell us a, a percentage or a reserve level number if you so chose. But the, right now, the GFOA is the recommended, it's right now, the Government Finance Officers Associate recommends the two months of operations, which is at 16.67.
Can I ask you, Fran, if we adjust down to the 16.67 that the GFOA finds acceptable, what does that do to our rating?
Um, we would have to go back and, you know, because we would have to report that we, the, the, but the, the key here is the 42.3. So they recognize the 42.3 and that's what they would look at primarily, is how much we have in reserves. So we would have in excess of the 16.67 or the two months reserve. So that would look as a positive. So my speculation that at this point in time, I don't think they would have a rating change as long as we didn't touch the reserves. That's what I would, my speculation would be.
Right. And we could easily just select some random number and say, okay, well, we want to have 40 million in that reserve.
Yeah, yes.
The council could take that action, right? I, I, I'm very opposed to doing any of this just because, look, we lived through a, a bad recession, right? So it's, it's like those people who are like, um, survivors of the depression, you know? They, it just changed, changes your mindset. And so I think for those of us who live through it, and I get, I get what you're saying. This is, these are options. We don't necessarily have to adopt them. But it just makes us, it makes me very nervous, again, to think that we can adjust these amounts um, on a supermajority, on a two-thirds majority by the council.
Which is why I wanted to put context. If you recall on the first page, at, in 2006, we had 42.9 million and we went down to 3 million. So in essence, you used 40 million.
Very quick.
Right. We exhausted it almost. Well, and, and these policies, these monies weren't there, really. I mean, there, there wasn't anything that, when we all looked at each other and said, well, is there a rainy day fund? I mean, we were new to the council and we, we just presumed that there would be, there wasn't anything. And so that's what made me very concerned about making sure we leave the next council healthy with some fund balance that they could draw from if they ever felt, you know, faced something like we did. So, um, that's what makes me very nervous. And I'm normally not conservative, but I am when it comes to fiscal policy, so.
The only issue here, if we maintain the 20%, we would probably then have to go back in, into the fund balance, which would probably be your one-time monies and use, we would need an additional 2.6 to maintain the 20%. We'd be, we're chasing the 20%.
So, yeah, go ahead.
Would just, uh, the 20%, I know when it first came up, it was a goal and being at the place where we were, at the point where we're staring down potentially, potential bank. And being at the place where we were, at the point where we're staring down potentially, potential bankruptcy and, and having a, a goal that was something to strive for, yeah, I, I think we all, uh, the council at the time, definitely committed ourselves to work hard to tighten our belt and have that, uh, you know, focus toward that. But where did that, where did the twenty percent come from, if you, do you recall?
Yes, at the time, um, uh.
At, at the time, there is a consultant by the name of Bill Statler, who was, uh, very involved in GFOA, had given us a heads-up that the direction of GFOA was to move to twenty percent reserve levels. So given the fact that we had, uh, got into a very deep fiscal crisis, we wanted to be very prudent in how we, we managed our finances. So we elected to go all the way up to twenty percent as part of the policy. We were trying to get ahead of the curve.
So, and the, that two-month reserve, two-month operations, that, that wasn't the, was that the standard at the time?
The two-month was the standard by GFOA, and it continues to be the standard. But our, yeah, indications were that they were gonna be changing that to twenty percent, you know, given the fiscal conditions of the cities.
And I would just say, as our pension costs are going to increase, our health, you know, retired healthcare is very prudent of, for us to, to, to maintain status quo at this time on this. Because we, you know, we gotta figure out ways to how we're gonna generate revenue, right? Sustainable, long-term to fix our structural problems. And, um, I'm hopeful, Fran, that you're gonna come up with some great ideas, um, on item number eight, revenue enhancement, enhancement options.
Another, um, follow-up question, that would be great. But the, uh, what is the, the, the language, a directive to have us reach, uh, take steps towards reaching and maintaining that twenty percent operating reserve? Clearly, we've been putting funds toward that over the last few years. Uh, and you highlight here is that, uh, based on the, the proposed budget, we would be behind the twenty percent, right? So we would need to increase. But what triggers that increase? And, and is it, uh, now, what's, what's the mechanism by which funds are identified? Is it something that, is it, is it, is it?
We would, we use the prior year final expenditure number. In other words, what the final expenses for the city out of the general fund are. So our projection right now for the year-ending sixteen-seventeen, uh, is the number that we're looking at. That, that's why we're anticipating that we're gonna probably need another two-point-six million. So we actually use the actual numbers. Now, mind you, we haven't closed yet, so we're just like projecting right now in terms of what that, that final value would be and what additional monies we would need to maintain the twenty percent.
Is, is the language that say that we shall, council shall, the city shall have, and, and what, what are the?
I'll, I'll read the, I'll read the language, I'll, I'll read the language to you. It says this, okay, upon attainment of fifteen percent, the city shall consider, and if approved, continue to strive for an overall goal of twenty percent for the unassigned revenue, uh, reserve account. The twenty percent got locked in when we did, I mean, it, the city manager locked us in on the twenty percent when we got the rating increase. Oh, or the rating approval. That's what's really driving this thing right now.
So if you diffuse it, there's potential loss of your guys' rating.
I, I don't.
Think so, you don't think so, Fran?
I mean, we could, we could ask, I think.
It's a, it's a valid question, but we, it's speculation at this point. Well, see, here's, I, you know, I know that.
Based on our condition now?
I may be jumping into, on, on the councilman's time, but what I, what I'm worried about is that, okay, if we adjust the twenty percent to the sixteen-point-six-seven, that means that we go down to thirty-seven-point-four from the forty-two-point-three that we're at.
Yes.
So that roughly five million is up for grabs, it seems like at that point, in my opinion, right? Because there's no longer any protective language to say, well, we can use those monies, draw from that to offset maybe any funded balance that we have.
Technically, you will have overfunded your.
Right, so we're gonna have some, what's, what we would consider, if we amend this language, we're gonna have excess monies in this. And those monies can be used by, you know, if five of us say, you know, here's five million because it's no longer protected. This is above what we're setting.
I would agree.
So I, 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 that is a valid point, and so like, just, just hypothetical, I like to use hypotheticals. If the city council, so just say we just said, hey, Fran, we wanna take it before the council and recommendation to do, uh, establish a new reserve level, and it's just gonna be not on a percentage, just forty-three million every year. The forty-three million is what we want in that reserve account. And anything moving forward, carryover forward, operating fund balance, we would get in addition, right? Because it wouldn't be going to the reserves, it would be going to that balance. Then the city council would make it a priority to say, look, we want this to go to the pension stabilization. We want this to go to deferred maintenance, we want this to go to smart technology, one-year projects, on and so forth, right? Because that balance wouldn't go to any other account, but it would go to this carryover forward, um, that, um, of fund balance, operating fund balance.
Yes, you, you can, you, you can actually do, there are a couple of cities that actually kinda like have dollar values in terms of the reserves. You could do that, and in addition to that, you could actually review that level based on your budget. So you can include that as part of your overall, you know, I wanna add more money to the reserve, you know, or increase the limit if you wanted to do so.
That excess money that you're talking about, you would be able to, we can make a policy to say it's gonna go to these pots, to deferred maintenance, to, you know, smart technology, to pension stabilization, one-year projects, et cetera. And that's all they can spend it in, and that, those pots. But we have to set that policy. If we don't set that policy, it just goes back to.
Quick question before you answer. So what if we can't get to five votes? What happens? I mean, we're in violation of our own policy, right?
Status quo. The, the other alternative is to give us direction to revise the, 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 uh, the policy to say between two months of operation, but up to twenty percent. That way.
Yes.
When you do your budget, you, at a minimum, you're gonna have the two months worth, which is the sixteen-point-six-seven, but if we go below the twenty, we're still within the policy. You continue to have the forty-two-point-three million in reserves, and you, you know, you solve your, your rating, your rating issue.
That's actually a, a good suggestion as well.
That's reasonable. I mean, it sounds like a reasonable option, and maybe that one should be included on here as a.
Definitely seems like it could be one, one to consider, so the, uh.
Include that option, yeah.
So otherwise, if we do, if we stay status quo, what I was trying to get to earlier, uh, we're already, we're, we're sort of in, in, we're behind there as well.
Correct.
So it just, it just, you know, compounds everything else, so.
The rationale behind changing the, uh, operating reserve policy is not really to use the money for one-time money, one-time funds or anything like that. It's really to prevent us from having to fund it even further when you're facing a deficit. So that's really the rationale behind it.
But you don't want an unintended consequence, either.
Correct.
Correct. Our, the intent was really to preserve the operating reserves as much as possible. That's the intent.
Yeah.
Or our objective anyway.
So to wanna make sure to have, have, uh, the, the safeguards to ensure we don't start tapping into it, don't make it easier to tap into it, but at the same time, not put ourselves in a situation where we're further, you know, in the red if we, we have to borrow to, to fill that.
So if you'd like, I could come back with language that, um, recognizes a rate, the range would now move to two months to twenty percent.
Yes.
Now, I mean, I, I could do that as a recommendation. Okay, so with that, let's, let's move to the one, use of one-time monies. So this is what, this is the language currently, as stated in the fiscal policy. One-time funding can only be used to match one-time non-recurring expenditures, term-specific projects and programs, as well as capital expenditures. That was the intent of one-time money. And, um, Mayor Protam is correct, that was the means by which to begin funding deferred maintenance. And if you, if you recall the first time, that's how we, that's primarily, we funded a lot of deferred maintenance. So in terms of options, so we identified a couple of things here, is allow the use of one-time monies to offset structural deficits for a two-year period only. In other words, you can use the one-time monies, but you only get two years' worth of it, and that's it. You gotta deal with the problem. Um, we kinda say the economic uncertainty remains the same in terms of its definition and language, so that doesn't change. And then option three is that for one-time monies, the city council can exercise a hundred percent full discretion. Basically, you guys choose in terms of how you wish to apply the one-time monies, um, which would, uh, you know, which would also include balancing structural deficits, but requires two-thirds vote of the city council. So it's kinda, it's, one kinda limits you, and the other one basically says you have full range in terms of how you wish to use the one-time money.
I just think having a range just, again, creates, you know, these illusions in not managing real expectations. Again, you know, one-time monies are specifically for one-time purposes, and so I think whether there's new council members on this diet, or, you know, next year, you know, um, in fourteen months, you know, the possibility of three of us leaving and giving them that they, it's okay to use one-time monies to fix structural deficit problems, just sends a bad message out into the community that we're really not dealing with the problem. And yes, we're saying that, you know, we would have to figure this out, it only would be for two years. But, you know, we should start figuring out how to get out of this in the, now, so that we can use these one-time monies for deferred ma, for real, true, you know, city projects and purposes like deferred maintenance, pension stabilization. You know, um, I mentioned, you know, smart technology, infrastructure, um, you know, those are key things that the city needs funds for, that typically would be one-time funds. And, you know, we have in, you know, when we look at, I, I, you know, I asked where our asset, you know, our asset management program is, and, you know, Fred is understaffed, you know, to get that done. But the importance of getting an asset management done, to understand where our, our, our deferred maintenance are, where our assets are, our property, right? Because we have so much property that could be on our tax rolls, right? But because we don't have this plan, we don't know, and we can't generate revenue. We're trying to figure out how to enhance our revenues, but again, we don't have an asset management plan. No one is, is, has figured, you know, we're starting in that process, but again, you know, I, you know, I don't know how he's doing it, you know, with so little staff and, and, you know, and they're doing multiple things. And so I don't blame you why it's not done, because I asked for it two years ago, but I definitely understand why it's not done. You just don't have the manpower to get it done, and are we gonna allocate the money for you to go get a consultant to get it done, right? So those are questions and what's of importance, I think, for this council to, to understand that when we look at issues like asset management and deferred maintenance, those are like very key, high priority, should be key, high priority issues for the city where we should be able to use those one-time funds. Yes, Fred?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor Protam. Asset managers, to provide you information, asset management master plan is completed, both in GIs and asset management. Next month, we're going to bid it out for, for implementation, so that's moving forward. And we're gonna implement it as a pilot, uh, for, um, Public Works Agency. But we're gonna set the base so it can be scalable for the rest of the city. So that, that, that project is really moving forward with a lot of priority on it, just to, just for information.
Fantastic, great, thank you.
So in terms of the, the one-time monies, if, if there's concern in terms of, um, using one-time monies for structural deficits, we could indicate that the use of one-time monies can only be used for one year. Now, that being said, if we were to, um, implement this, then obviously you'd have a problem in eighteen-nineteen because it basically forces you to deal with the problem for eighteen-nineteen because you could not utilize the one-time monies. If anything, we'd probably have to go back and identify elements within the budget that are of one-time origin and see if we can't come up with values that would match the one-time monies and release those revenues for maybe ongoing expenditures. So it becomes a different type of task that we would have to do, you know, but, um, but, and so in this case, it's, it's really at the pleasure of the committee in terms of whether or not you want to just restrict it to one year or move in a different direction.
Is there any reason why we need to modify this at all?
Yes, well, well, if you wish to use the one-time monies to, to do the gap for seventeen-eighteen, then you need to modify this because right now there is no provision to utilize one-time monies to fix any type of.
Policy would not allow you to use one-time money for ongoing operations. And really the intent of the use of the one-time monies and bringing this forward to the committee is really to balance the budget while we're trying to figure out mechanisms or any opportunities that exist for either alternative service delivery models, different changes that we need to do, innovations and efficiencies that are gonna generate savings over, over a two-year period. So that's really the intent of the use.
So. But so the, the, the funds that we have, uh, what did you call them? Intentionally, not, not surplus funds, but the excess funds.
Balance-forward funds, balance-forward.
So those, those un, uh, 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 basically funds that are not designated, undesignated funds right now, excess, undesignated funds are not currently considered reserve funds. And tho, those we don't have a problem using as one-time funds to balance, right? It's only if we're, if we're going to, to tap into the.
No, it's, it's to allow us to use those monies, although they have been identified to, to conduct projects or services or, you know, new items that were brought to the city council, they were never included as part of the budget. So the monies were sitting in our, in our fund balances. So in order to use these, because they are one-time money, once you use them, they, they don't regenerate again, we would seek city council authority to tap into those monies and spend them. So our intent, uh, was to bring all those items, uh, that, uh, under the previous administration, they identified economic development, I think some were for South Main, uh, branding, I believe, there was a C-Peg. So all those elements, the intent was to bring in those back to the city council for approval. Once you'd approve them, we would be allowed then to use these one-time monies for one-time specific purposes. But right now, because we're using one-time monies to pay for labor, which is ongoing, or paying for maintenance, which is ongoing, it requires the city council to take action.
But, but not necess, but not to modify our reserve policy? Like, it, it's, it's, I understand.
It's, it's a direction.
We're on something different now. We're, we're on what use of one-time monies.
Right, correct. Okay, so this, this is not, this is not fiscal.
We're done with fiscal policy.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Okay, okay, so that was what my, so, so why are we addressing, why is it?
Because we, we need, they, they're gonna need our support, um, to use these one-time monies to, the, the, the balance of the gap of the budget, the structural deficit nine-point-three, and then the four-point-three, to use those monies for, to, to, to balance the budget.
No, the fiscal policy does say, use of one-time monies for one, for term-specific projects. But we're asking.
But what I'm saying is, that option, what, right now, this, and I tell it says, status quo, does, isn't that clause specific to our fiscal reserve policy?
It's not, it's, it's.
It's not?
This language is embedded in the reserve policy, because what we were trying to do is ensure that we were prudent in how we spent our monies, and that we were using one-time monies for ongoing costs or, or non-recurring expenditures.
So this is not, what, what is this, that, that clause, what is it referring to?
In order to achieve our reserve levels, the intent was to include language that, that would be specific as to how we use new monies coming into the city. Okay, we were trying to be very fiscally prudent. So although it's not specific to the reserve policy, it is part of the budget and financial policy. So that's where this language comes into play, not so much the reserves, but how we, how we present budgets to the city council. Because for years, budgets were presented to the city council in which we were using one-time monies to balance the budget. So the intent was, let's be open and transparent, let's add this language as to how we will move forward on the use of one-time monies.
So this is, this is a guide to the use of one-time funds?
Correct.
In general, it's not specific to, to?
Not the reserves.
The funds and the reserves, okay.
So before you walked in, I asked the same exact question. And so let, let me just give some, you know, if I could just make a commentary to staff. It's just a little confusing the way it's presented to us because we're going back and forth.
Yes.
Right, so if I could, you know, make a suggestion, when you present it to the full council, you have to segregate these two ideas, right? So when we talk about the operating reserves and those protections and those, that twenty percent that we're trying to adjust, so we're not chasing it, and we're still gonna be able to meet it, and not have this burden of having to put money into it to keep that twenty percent level, is different than what we're trying to address here as well. But it, the way it's presented, it's like presented all as one policy, and it really is, um, a little misleading. So one of the things I, I would suggest is, number one, separating them as much as possible, just so there's clarity and there's not confusion on behalf of the public, and on behalf of the council as well. And also on the operating reserves, if you don't find that language where there has to be a declaration of, of a fiscal crisis, I think it should be considered as part of the adoption when we adjust the amount maybe from two months to twenty percent. I think there also should be a declaration of the fiscal crisis to trigger use of that money. So let's use this as an opportunity to do that. And number two, I think on this one, um, you know, somebody said going from a two-year to a one-year. What's, what's staff's thought on that? I mean, how difficult is it gonna make it for staff to go?
Uh, it's hard to assess right now because. It's hard to assess right now because we would have to go back into the budget and try to pull out as men, as much one-time expenditures that we could identify and it'd be hard to do that and, I mean, we, we'd need time to do that, yeah.
So the two-year gives staff the ability to maybe have some time to be able to figure out how the monies can be replenished, how there can be some structural solutions.
Correct.
Do you guys need action on this item to move it to the council?
Yes.
You guys are going to need...
Well, we...
Can we segregate the two, yeah, because I'm not supportive of...
They're both embedded in the same fiscal policy, that's why they're bringing...
Well, let's just, let's just, just say A is for the fiscal reserve and B is for the one-time monies.
Correct.
And then we can vote that way, even though it's all included. So if you, are you guys ready to vote? Or you guys have more questions on the one-time monies?
I, I, I can't say that I'm ready to vote or ready to modify what we, what we, I'm open if somebody has a...
If, if anything, we would, we're looking for a direction, so we would not necessarily take the final item to council until the first meeting in June.
To June 6th.
So we're just looking for a direction, well, obviously tomorrow night would probably give us even clearer direction because tomorrow night is just the presentation of the draft budget, if you will, and then on June, first meeting in June is the actual budget.
So, so just for the committee's consideration, I would just recommend and suggest that there be the option on the operating reserve to go from the two months to the 20% with the additional condition that there has to be a fiscal crisis declared. So that would be one suggestion and I'm sure my colleagues have another or maybe alternative ones.
No, I'm good with the reserve on the one, use of one-time monies, on option two that I, maybe something you all can consider, if it makes sense, it's just, I just, I just can't be supportive, it just, it just, we're not managing expectations, but, you know, for the rest of the council, they need to vote on this, but just to give you guys some options, maybe allow use of one-time monies to offset structural deficits for one-year period and, and a second year with approval back to the city council for consideration is something that you all can take a look at. Because I just can't, just, just, my soul, my heart, my mind will not allow me to do that, it's just, it's just, we're, we're not managing expectations. But that's just an option for you all to consider.
Okay, we'll take that, we'll bring that back. So we'll have, when we present it to the city council on June, we'll have the options listed and then you guys can by vote select. So that concludes the fiscal policy.
Fran, just some on some of the budget items and some policy that I wanted. As I mentioned, the carryover forward operating fund balance, you, I think you already took a jot-down on the maintenance, the, the, the pension stability fund, the one-year pilot, you know, smart infrastructure and technology. And then, then the request for a policy that dictates that the city manager should annually present a mid-year fiscal review to the city council between January and March because we don't have that. And then, and then as well, the, all, so, I think that covers that on that one. And then ask for, so, ask, I wanted to ask for a full accounting of all unspent funds from vacant positions from all city departments and consider asking for regular updates on a quarterly basis and then label those funds and post them on the city's website on a chart that our citizens can see, which includes of the listing of, you know, whatever funds that we do have from, you know, whether it's surplus, previous budget, increased sales tax and user fees as we continue to be more transparent. I think that's important. And then establish a clear policy on how leftover funds from vacant positions can be allocated. The council may decide that some departments have backlogs and should receive additional funding, other, or that some funds should be transferred to, to, to one of the utilities to hold down a rate increase, on and so forth. But currently, right now, what we all do in our, what we do in our budgets is that we allocate positions, right? And I think that's probably some of the questions that the recent council members that are part of this council saying, well, you allocated 101 positions in the police department and you haven't filled those, right? And so those monies, you know, how there's, how we actually allocate those for those positions, maybe having one account so that we all can keep track and who's filling those and who's not. Because I think it, it creates a lot of confusion that we're actually allocating all these positions for these various departments and then, you know, at the end, you know, we, we didn't hire any of those positions and then where do those monies go? You know, do we continue? Our priorities may shift and say, hey, we're not going to, you know, hire, you know, folks in planning, but we're going to, you know, increase code enforcement, on and so forth, and we know what dollars that we have and we can utilize. Just something for us to, for us to consider as we move forward in, in our budget policy discussions.
Great. Thank you.
Great. And I think next is the jail cost review and structure.
Sure, for that presentation, we have Police Administrative Manager, Robert Carroll, and then Jail Administrator, Chris Holland.
Okay, thank you, Mayor Carroll Martinez and Councilmember Benitez and Ms. Miento. Initially, I'm just going to give you an overview of the various models. In council, I've heard a lot of discussion about type one and type two, so I wanted to make some clarification, or bring some clarification to what each of the facilities are. First one is a type-two jail facility, which is what we currently operate.
Can you put it closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. The type-two jail facility is what we currently operate right now and that's primarily for pre-trial and sentenced inmates. Most county facilities are type-two. For Santa Ana Jail, our contract partners are the ones who provide the inmate population. So we don't have any local arrests that are, that remain in our custody beyond their arrival and their transfer to the county or their release, which occurs within the same day. It also, to have a type-two jail facility requires a variety of services to be provided, including a medical, contract, food services, commissary, law library, education and religious programs. So there's a lot involved in have, in running and operating a type-two facility. A type-one jail facility is intended for pre-arrayment felony misdemeanor offenders only and that generally they're held for 48 to 72 hours, basically just long enough for them to, to get an arraignment date and then they're transferred to the court for that purpose. Even for type-one, though, we still would have to have a meal service provided, uniforms, bedding, hygiene supplies because they are staying overnight at least some two to three days. The temporary holding facility is more for our local arrests that are being released or being transferred to the county on the same day that they arrive. So they would be there anywhere from four to six hours, depending on how long it takes to book them, on their sobriety and ensuring that they're able to care for themselves if in fact they're being released out to the public. And there is minimal contract obligations for that type of facility and minimal supplies that are required. Currently with the type-two contract housing, this model on the, on this slide indicates what we will be effective July 1st, 2017 with the current agreements in place and the current staffing in place at that time. And so we show a cost to operate would total 16,922,000 plus and in revenue would be 4.862 with leaving a net operating deficit of 12,600,000. And those agreements, again, include the US Marshals, Bureau of Prisons and also Irvine and Fountain Valley, but those only are booking services only, they don't actually stay the night, they're not kept in custody overnight.
Two, I'm sorry, two questions, Ms. Holland. The, the Irvine and Fountain Valley contracts, why would those be under the type-two since, or, or are they not? Are they, are they just in general contract, just identifying general contracts that we have?
Correct, that would be effective July 1st, we would still be maintaining those two agreements.
Okay, so they're not necessarily specific to the type-two, it's just contracts that we have at the...
That's correct.
And then back to the previous slide, the temporary holding facility, or, or just the, the general question, cities, other, other, your typi- typical city municipality and, and maybe even just as we look throughout Orange County, do they have type-ones or do they have type temporary holding facilities exclusively as, as a general facility available to them?
Currently, currently, most of them have only holding facilities. Once the county dropped their booking fee charge, everybody, even though they had a capacity to hold them overnight and hold them till arraignment, they, they just changed to temporary and they just transferred the same day to the county.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and our current staffing levels with the type-two, again, this would be looking at numbers for July 1st, 2017, 81 full-time, one part-time would be needing, needed to operate. And that, those full-time positions include everybody, correctional officers, supervisors, admin staff and support records. Services that would be provided or continue to be provided would be the housing, obviously the housing element for the contract partners, food and commissary services, law library, inmate education and religious programs, medical, dental, mental health services, inmate counseling, and then obviously court transports to outside agencies and to court. And no cities that I'm aware of utilize a type-two, mostly county facilities are the ones who operate that. For type-one model, generally there are no housing agreements because nobody is staying beyond their, their arraignment, so you wouldn't have any housing contracts there. We would, offenders would be provided uniforms and hygiene items, as mentioned earlier. They, they would be provided meals, so we'd have to have meal service and they would also need to have phone services and visitation allowance. A court list would be prepared for our staff every day so to make sure that the, that the individuals who were kept in custody until they were arraigned were eventually transported to court for their arraignment. And then they would be scheduled to, once they were sent to arraignment, they would then be either remanded to the sheriff's department or released depending on what the court determined for that, for their case. Currently, LAPD, Huntington Beach PD and Pasadena PD all utilize a type-one model.
Ms. Holland, of, of how many agencies that you inquired from? So is it, is this specific to Southern California, throughout the state or...
Yeah, I, those are agencies that I, that I know of and that I communicate with, like they're jail administrators, so I'm aware that their facilities, that's how they operate. And a lot of them is for distance because they don't, they're not very close to the county facility, so they'll hold them until arraignment and they just take the whole group all at once versus taking them multiple trips as they come in, it just becomes too much of a hardship and a transport problem.
Thank you.
So a quick question, on the type-one versus a type-two versus the holding facility, why is a type-one, is a type-one the same sort of cost structure that the type-two is? I guess I don't see the...
The, the significant difference with the type-one is the fact that there, you're talking only your arrests, so you're only talking your Santa Ana arrestees that are coming in, but because of their overnight for several days, you still have to provide them food. It wouldn't be equal to those that are pre-sentenced or waiting for trial because they would be there for months, so therefore religious services comes into play, education services, just a variety of different commissary things, purchases have to come in, so because of their long-term.
No, I, I get that, but I'm, I'm just trying to find out what's the cost, like, to operate a type-one?
Yeah, the, the type-one, again, because of our proximity to the Orange County facility with the tunnel and everything, there's not, it's not one of our recommended options, but we know that the cost would be probably about a half million to a million dollars more than the temporary holding facility.
Got it, but it doesn't make sense because of the county being adjacent to where we are and we could access those, those facilities.
Correct.
Okay, and the temporary holding facility costs would be 8.6 million, 8,600,070. Revenue would be about 50,000 and the net operating deficit would be 8,620,000 roughly. No housing contracts obviously would, would be involved because we would have no one staying there beyond their custody date. And we're looking at continuing the booking contracts or agreements with Tustin, Irvine and Newport, but again, those are just booking for the day, there would just be a fee that we would take to book the individuals that the county jail won't accept or that they wouldn't have to have their police officers standing guard with until they're either sober or releasable. The staffing for temporary holding facility model would equal to about 54 full-time staff and one part-time. And again, those positions are, include all positions, correctional records, correctional officers, supervisors and admin support. Okay, the services that are provided at the temporary holding, which is what we currently do, we, we actually operate, we perform all the functions of both the holding facility and a type-two. We restrain, monitor the uncooperative offenders, those who are under the influence, which our numbers have increased tremendously over the last several months. Provide hospital guard service for the offenders that are admitted. If an officer makes an arrest and the individual being arrested is either injured or has a medical emergency, they're taken to the hospital. If they're admitted, the officer, the watch commander will then notify the jail and the jail will send somebody to guard the inmate and the officer can then return back to patrol. So that's kind of a, a huge task that we are saving them. And a lot of times they're in the hospital for several days, depending on what the injury is or if they have to have surgery. This, we've had people in the hospital for, you know, eight to 10 days and they're, they require 24-hour coverage. We coordinate also psychiatric evaluations for offenders. When somebody comes in, especially with our huge transient population that do come in, several of them do have mental illness, but some of them may also be self-medicating and have, under the influence. So they won't come and do a psychiatric assessment on them until after they have been deemed sober. And once that's psychiatric done, which can take several hours, six to eight hours, so we stand by with the individual in our booking area until they get to that point. We contact the psychiatric assessment staff, they come to our facility, do an evaluation and at that point they may 5150 them and, and request that they be admitted into a mental hospital, which we will then either affect the transport ourselves or we'll, they'll be going to be a paramedic once we do all the release paperwork. And then we also transport our offenders. For those that Orange County Jail may reject upon booking for medical reason, they'll come back to Santa Ana Jail, again, our transport officers will suit up, take the individual to the hospital, get them medically cleared and bring them back and try to rebook at the county. So again, those are all tasks that the patrol officer would otherwise have to do. We also complete all the booking paperwork and property inventory. The patrol officer will inventory property or, I'm sorry, search an inmate or arrestee for weapons, but when they come to the jail, that's where we get into the details and find it, take all their property off of them, search for narcotics and any other contraband and we process it. And then we also book our, process our local releasable offenders that are simply there for short-term that are just going to be booked, fingerprinted and life-scanned. We also, the jail staff also process all the registrants that are required, corridor registrants that are required to identify where they are in the city. Our staff also compile video and phone recordings responsive to district attorney requests and subpoenas, so that, that again itself takes several hours a week where we actually pull video for local arrestees that are going to court and where the DA makes the request. And we also assist with the bookings for mass arrests, protest, DUI and vice programs. So if patrol is going to set up a program or the vice unit is going to, then we will send a unit, patrol, I'm sorry, a booking van with two correctional, jail transport officers to assist with bringing the individuals back to our jail to process so that the, again, leaving patrol out in the field to continue their, their efforts. Currently, a holding facility right now, Anaheim PD, Costa Mesa PD, Garden Grove all utilize the holding, temporary holding facility model. Pending items right now are basically, we're waiting the results of the jail reuse report and recommendations on how we can further reduce the jail operating costs and also waiting direction from city council to revise the fiscal year 2017, 18 budget to reflect the transition to whatever selected jail model is chosen.
Just one thing to mention with the holding facility, I believe they end up occupying the basement and the first two floors?
Correct.
So there would be floor number three and floor number four, which would be completely available for a jail reuse.
Correct.
Any additional questions?
I do have a question. One, thank you for this information and it's, it's helpful to be able to see the comparisons, to see, you know, the plain numbers and appreciate. You make this available to us, it, obviously council is wrestling through a lot and some, some significant decisions here going forward, primarily as it relates to some of the, the cost. And so that, that's my question, the page six, slide six, cost to operate, 78, 7 million 865, does any of that include the debt, the current debt service or is that in addition to and what does that do once...
That does not include the debt service.
Okay, so, so that's an additional, how much?
About 3 million a year.
Until 2024?
Yes.
That's just purely operation of the, of the facility? Okay, that's addressed my question, thank you.
Councilman Miento?
Thanks, and this is, um, this is to staff and, and thank you for the, for the presentation as well. So what we're looking at, if we were to transition from a type-two to a holding facility because a type-one really doesn't make sense given our proximity to the county jail facility and their inexpensive way of holding detainees, it looks like we would be, I guess, improving our situation by about 4 million, right?
It would be, it would be improving the general fund situation by 8 million, the... The proposal in the finances presentation would, we would be saving half of that, because we would be implementing the change January 1st. So that, that's where the 4 million comes from.
Okay, so this is looking at half of that, because I'm just going from the, yeah, the net operating deficit, I guess, under a type two is about 12 million. Net operating deficit is about 8.6 under a holding facility, right?
Correct.
Oh, sorry, okay. Got it, so it's the 8 million, and that's what we would, I guess, improve our situation?
Correct. And then the holding facility, I mean, and it's all dependent on the city council's direction, is that there's different models of holding facility. This assumes you continue to keep the current job titles and pay that we currently have, it's your own staff. There are models where you can outsource a holding facility, or you change the structure of a holding facility, which could generate additional savings, but that is a discussion amongst the city council that we, that we were looking forward to have.
Well, it sounds like other cities that are comparable to ours, or at least, you know, near ours, have holding facilities, right? As opposed, I think we're the only city, it sounds like, that we, that has a type two, right? So that, that model probably doesn't work for us, given where we are right now financially and, and the fact that, you know, contracts are just not there to house it. We've never been at capacity there to begin with, I think, or we haven't been there for a while, because if I'm not mistaken, it's about 500 beds that we have there, or?
It's about 512, was it?
512.
And how many beds have we averaged? I mean, how many detainees have we averaged at any given time?
Well, it depends on the timeframe, but we have had, our population is the lowest now it's ever been, but we've been as high as 460, 480 for a period. So it just, it just depends on what timeframe you're looking at. Our average population with ICE was about 200, 160 to 200, and it would drop as low as 140, but it would stay up in that area. US Marshals at one point were 260 to 280, now they've been at about 110 for several, couple of years at least.
Right.
So it really has fluctuated throughout the...
I remember the 150 for ICE, 100 for the US Marshals is what the average was, so that would be almost, well, about half, right, of the capacity of the, of the jail beds that we have available there.
Correct.
So it makes it real difficult for us to continue carrying this, especially since there's, you know, and I know, and I want to thank staff for going out and sitting down with the US Marshals to see if that contract could be improved, and it sounds like there isn't much of a possibility there. So the staffing levels for a holding facility goes from 81...
To 54?
To 54, so we're looking at about 26, 27 full-time positions. And as you said, they're defined right now differently, because they, they're probably, they probably have job requirements for a type two, which are much more specific than a holding facility, because for a type two, you're holding detainees that have different needs than, than the detainees that we would have in a holding facility.
Correct.
Do we have that number? Let's just say if we adjusted those job titles and everything else, I mean, what that number would be, I would assume it's a, the debt recovery, or our recovery is even larger, right?
I had spoken to the personnel director, Ed Raya, and he had indicated, you know, he, it was kind of like, you know, kind of like in the wind here, he said probably an additional 30% could be saved in cost, if I recall correctly.
With the adjustments, maybe?
Yes.
Okay.
Just, thank you, F. Temps. One of the other things that comes to mind is that, right now, we have, with having the type two designation, we have all, all floors, a full facility designated, right, which needs to be operating, the overhead and all. Reducing, scaling back to temporary holding facility, and suddenly that, that, the building there, that, those portions, those floors, suddenly become potentially an asset rather than liability, in that it could, if we go through the whole reuse process and are successful in identifying something that would actually allow for us to be able to make use of those spaces with an alternative use, and potentially provide some sorts of revenue, it would actually put us in an even better position, or reduce that, kind of offset some of that 8 million dollars that it does cost to, that it would cost to operate. So essentially, there are other benefits in the long run when it comes to the fiscal impact, to look at, at changing the designation, is what I'm seeing. Beyond just the operating, there's actually, again, it becomes now an opportunity for us to be able to further offset.
Great, and I'll just be brief, I concur with the comments of both Councilmen Sarmiento and Benavides. The only thing that I guess where I differentiate, and I have for the past eight years, is that it's, the jail business is not a core service of the city of San Ana, it's not. And we were never, we should have never been in the business to generate, or, you know, make revenue. That's not the business the government is in, and we should have never gone there, and so, for those reasons, I just, you know, believe that as we move forward, again, the term managing expectations, you know, understanding our structural deficit, understanding the issues with our pension costs that are going to double within the next two to four years, our healthcare costs, you know, not being able to hire more employees to, to do the workload that we already currently have. And so, I believe that as we look at the city as a whole, and being futuristic and looking at a preferred future for this city, it's only right that we get out of this business 100%. It only makes the most sense, and so I'm looking forward to the reuse study, so that it can give us those options, and, you know, I really believe that we have opportunities with renewable energies, you know, how we can capture energy and using that facility. I know people have made mention of, you know, using it for, you know, homeless shelter, for housing, it's next to a police department, it's next to a big parking structure, and so as we look forward and try to be futuristic, is looking at these, you know, other ways of how we actually can, you know, if you look at waste and you look at our landfills, you could actually generate, you could generate, you know, energy from that. And so I'm not saying that we would go and put a waste or a landfill there, but there are other ways of actually how you can capture energy, actually, you know, generate energy, and possibly even sell that energy. And so we have to, to look at other ideas of, and those kinds of possibilities. If you look at the city of San Diego, you know, they are, you know, moving in regards to renewable energies, and they have the biggest battery facility in the world. And so we too should aim to strive to, to look at those kinds of technologies here in this city, and we possibly have a facility to do that. And so I just want us to be mindful and to dream big, and to look at options of moving our city in that direction.
One more, just comment, and maybe it's a suggestion for staff to include as, and this was a great overview, I think it helps us, you know, understand where the problems are. But one thing as well, I mean, going to Mayor Pro Temps' point, maybe we should have a slide saying, well, what if we did decide to opt out of just providing jail services, right? One of the things I think that, you know, San Ana's a county seat, we are burdened with a lot of government responsibilities for the rest of the county. One of the benefits is that we have the county jail facility right next to us. So if there is a benefit in being a county seat, it's because you have these facilities that are fairly inexpensive to do, or to access. And if we were to opt out of the jail, you know, service, delivery, we would only be carrying the debt service, right? And that debt service is only 3 million, well, not only, but I mean, given how much we've had to, what our carrying costs have been, that's a relatively small number. And at some point, when the debt, you know, is expired in 2024, you know, we have an asset, and maybe the reuse study is going to see how we can use this asset, and I don't think anybody wants to make money, but I mean, I think you don't want to lose money, or you don't want to carry something when it isn't a core service, and I think that's an excellent point. I think that, you know, we, we have other core services that are going to suffer at the expense of a non-core service, and that's what makes it, I think, very difficult to do. And so maybe there's, you know, a snapshot that we can have as well?
I think that'll require probably more discussion with staff, as to what are we required to do from a holding facility, or what, what kind of staffing levels we would need in order to transfer inmates, or folks that, that are brought into our jail over to the county. I don't think you can get away from doing holding facility 100%, but I think it's worth a discussion with staff. The other alternatives are the opportunities in terms of outsourcing that type of work that could potentially generate more, more cost savings, but let us go back with staff and explore those options.
Couple of other questions, points. One is with regard to how to enhance this, this presentation, I think adding a slide that would compare, in addition to the question that Councilman Sarmiento made, but a comparison, if we're looking at type two current versus type, versus temporary holding facility, just a side-by-side, so that there's just, so we can get to that number of what that, the difference would be. Another question I have is the, from what I understand, Anaheim has a temporary holding facility model. I'm curious, I don't know if we know offhand what their, their cost structure is, they seem to be a comparable-sized city.
Staff has, has looked, I think them, as, as a model, like, what, what, is it about 6 million?
And, and is that, do we know whether the, the number of arrests are that, that much higher here, or lower there, that would, I'm just curious, what, what would equate, if it's a comparable-sized city, how they do it, I imagine with less staffing and, and to be able to achieve that $2 million?
Sure. We can look into that and actually identify maybe the types of positions or titles, or their pay rates, and their structure, and we can, we can bring that forward back to the committee.
Yeah, great.
You may have some? Okay.
The temporary holding facility, the list of items here, we are kind of consider the temporary holding facility the bare-bones model already. The items that have asterisk, and really all these services, if you're talking about doing away with all, the entire jail, all these responsibilities would have to fall on someone, because San Ana PD, they're always going to, we're always going to have arrestees that we have to process. Under this model here, the temporary holding facility, the correctional officers would provide those services. If we didn't have correctional officers to do, to do that work, those responsibilities are going to fall on field operations, you know, so we're going to still have to do, perform this work, but it's going to be taking officers out of the field. The items with the asterisk are really the priorities, big impacts that, you know, the correctional officers, you know, they bear that responsibility, and from what I understand, there's several of these items that the $6 million Anaheim model, they do not perform. So by, by our correctional officers performing these duties, you know, field offices, as everyone knows, they're thinly staffed, it allows them to get back in the field as soon as possible, because our correctional officers are pitching in and taking on much of this workload.
Okay.
Can I add to that?
Sure.
Sure, so I go back to a day when we didn't have that service, and what would happen is, is that from the patrol officer standpoint, we would be staffed, you know, we'd have minimum staffing numbers, and then all of a sudden we have somebody that's at the jail for 20, or at the hospital for 24, 48 hours, and we're having to take somebody that would be responsible for calls for service, and dedicate them to sit in there babysitting somebody at the hospital, until we can get them arraigned. At the arraignment point, then the county comes in and takes over for us. So to have the correction people there to, to provide that service has just been invaluable to us, as well as some of the other core ones that, that we have on there, the psychiatric evaluation, the ability to hold them for a period of time. We're all officers that did that in the past.
And that makes perfect sense, I think, it really does. I mean, it, it, it almost makes us understand why the jail was built in the first place, because then you could, you know, turn around officer time, you can have more folks in the field. Problem is, is that, I don't, I think that somehow from the, from that purpose, it went to a type two, right? So, I mean, I think had, maybe again, you know, we stuck to that original premise, let's get officers back in the field, and let's use other staff to, you know, book and, and do all the, provide all the services there, it might have been modified to a much smaller, more contained type, maybe type one or a holding facility asset, but this is a really large facility. I mean, and I don't know, that's why, I guess I'm trying to, you're saying two floors, if we, if we use it as a holding facility for the number of arrests that we're averaging, the number of detainees that we have under a holding facility model, we would probably have two floors that are excess almost, right? That makes sense to me, because I don't think we're, I mean, we're, we're not arresting at that clip, right?
That's true.
Where we're going to have 500, you know, people in a holding facility.
No, two floors would be unoccupied. It's the, it's the number of, the amount of area that we need to bring people in, process them, get them through, hold them for whatever period of time, transfer them through the tunnel over to, to the sheriff's department, and the personnel, jail administrator Holland has sat down and kind of worked through what the minimum staffing would be in order to be able to, to have a facility like that, where the officer brings somebody in, the corrections officers handle most of the booking responsibilities, the transport responsibilities, any kind of medical responsibilities, and then the officer's then free to return back to the field, and that was the, the 54 correctional officer number.
So my last suggestion would be, if we can still give direction to the consultant who's doing our reuse study, to say, can you also look at this hybrid model, where we have a holding facility for the first two floors, second two floors, maybe they, you know, then they don't have to come up with a, you know, reuse model for the whole facility.
That's why you got to go into that, it's a perfect opportunity.
Two last questions, well, one question, one suggestion. One is the status of the reuse study, what date, when we anticipate that we'll be getting that back, you know, if we have question, answer for, for that question. And then the other, you know, one of council members made mention of the benefits of being a county seat, and one of those, being the county seat, having, we've been dealing with, and there's been some discussion over the last year-plus about the, the significant impact of the homeless community, and our officers, and the resources that go there. And we've talked about how this, in reality, it's more of a regional and a county issue, and county, you know, seat of government. And I know we have the civic center joint use, or the, the joint powers agreement, where they cover a few of the officers. But I'm just wondering, you know, something for us to think about, is some of these, the resources that I think we're, we're placing go beyond, far beyond that, that joint powers and the few, that, that money that comes in to cover some of those positions, I'm just wondering whether some of these costs should be something that is, we figured out a way to roll into the county, so that the county would start either reimbursing at a larger amount, or where they start taking handle of civic center, and if there are any issues out there that they have to address, that needs to be addressed with regard to homeless such, where they, and they need to be booked, processed, where it goes through county directly, so that we can free our officers to be doing the patrolling out there. I just think that there needs to, we need to explore just further. We've been doing things a certain, a certain way for a period of time, and we've been taking the, the majority of, of the responsibility as a city. We've got a much larger agency across the street with much more, with regard to resources, that they've been getting by with, with, I think, not putting as much, or carrying as much of the load, and I think we really need to look at how we get to a place where it's, it's more balanced. So it's just a comment for us to consider, and again, I don't know if we have an answer with regard to reuse study, that's my last question on the slide.
Sure. Jorge Garcia has been working with Christina Holland on the jail reuse study. Jorge's on vacation right now, but maybe Christina, you can give us maybe a couple of...
Yeah, the last update Jorge gave me before he left was that we did have a conference call with the reuse study committee, and they're looking to be able to present something, at least a draft or an update on where they are now for council, I think the first week of June, is their goal, to provide at least some kind of idea of where they are, where the status is. And they're hoping, I think, that they're projected to have the report done in August, because they were given the four months to prepare it and present it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for the presentation, very good one, thank you, appreciate it. Next is...
Excuse me, in terms of the presentation for the trial budget, do you, in terms of how to basically present the, whether or not we move with a half a year, do you want us to embed it as part of the trial budget, or do you want us to leave it outside as, like an option in terms of?
Outside as an option is, would be something that I think is, so there's no confusion?
No, I think it's significant enough of, of an action that would need to be taken by council. So your, your question right now is just to, to include it within as, and not necessarily highlight the, the... highlight the, the specifics?
No, we would, but it would be, there's one way, we embed it as into the budget as a recommended, as recommended, or we leave it outside the budget for tomorrow and have, give direction by the entire city council. I, I, they would have to do it on both ends, but.
Yeah, right.
But.
I, I, I hear, I understand the question more clearly now and I think, I, I think we don't really have, there aren't really too many options here in, in reality. The fact that we're, we're sitting with a vacant.
Jail.
Jail with, with a couple of floors that are virtually unutilized. So I, I think it, it needs to be included now that I understand more clearly and that we can, you can highlight and make mention of it. But as I understand, if it's included, then the assumption is this is the recommendation, members of the council, the recommendation is that the steps are taken to.
Correct.
Right. To, to reduce the, the function and there would obviously be other actions that would need, need to be taken, but for the purposes of consideration and, and the budget, budgeting, are we budgeting for the existing?
Correct.
Two, are we exist, are we budgeting for scaled back? That, that's, that's a question. If we were budgeting for scaled back, then it's included in the trial budget as a reduced.
So if it's a holding facility, we would, we would go back to slide number 10.
Yes.
On the budget presentation, which is just a snapshot of what a balanced budget could look like if you were to utilize one-time monies as well as you're going down to a holding facility.
You know, I think that makes sense just because the, we're making presumptions already with respect to sale of land that, you know, hasn't been adopted, but it's likely, given our options for this, this is probably a fairly conservative way to look at it.
Okay.
And so I think if you want, maybe you can asterisk it.
Sure.
So, you know, so the other members of the council that are not on this committee understand, we're not obligating this on anybody nor this is something that's forced upon anybody. This is just one of the realistic options, I think, that came out of our conversation.
Okay. We would do the same. Then in terms of the use of one-time monies, then it would be based basically on the same discussion premise.
Right.
Okay.
Fantastic. Next is revenue enhancement options. Fran, so just in the interest, I, I'm glad that you put this together, but those were the two items that I brought before to put on this agenda was revenue and have enhancement options and then cooperative business ordinance. Those were my two items. But on the revenue, if you could just briefly, and you read, kind of read my mind on, on a lot of this stuff, so yeah, go ahead and begin.
Okay. Thank you. So what I wanted to present here was just items that have, the city has undertaken or proposed to undertake in terms of trying to generate additional revenue. One of the items, and Fred shot put this forward, Public Works, in terms of conducting a citywide fee study, this will obviously assist in identifying what fees maybe we're not recovering or generating additional fees. The biggest factor here is going to be whether or not the city council wishes to pursue 100% cost recovery because that's always been an issue with this city. We've always subsidized a lot of our programs, you know, based on the population per se, but at least this fee study will at least identify what the full value that we can potentially generate in the future. The second item is the development impact fee. This will be a fee that will be, this new and proposed for development projects to pay for all portions of the cost of providing services in order to get that development in. The city attorney has often talked about illegal expense reimbursement. This would be to help pay for services rendered by the city attorney's office in order to prepare, for example, agreements or documents for development. Obviously, the city manager's office is working on the jail reuse study. There's been a proposal, and I think Mayor Protim, you've asked about this, is looking at all the city-owned properties in order to identify, you know, what, what pieces of property can actually be sold or to have higher value. And then what I've actually indicated here, since it's also been a topic of discussion, is in terms of sales tax and hotel visitors' tax, what the potential revenue could be achieved if we were to generate another quarter, half or 1% of revenue in, for both areas. So this is just information for individuals. I've also provided from Coleman, from the, from Coleman is the, the past election in terms of the measures, how much, how many sales tax were actually adopted and as well as the city attorney had put together a ma, a kind of like a matrix in terms of what needs to be done in order to take initiative to the ballot and what, what would, and some trigger points and events that would need to occur. So that's information that's been provided to you and any other additional thoughts, Mayor Protim, that you may have, we're obviously happy to consider.
Fran, one of the things that I would like to know while to, to, to remove, to go beyond, you know, a healthy, you know, budget and, and remove ourselves from a structural deficit and some of the issues that we're facing with Prop 218 that I won't go into detail here because you guys all get scared, but there, there's, there's big issues with, specifically with some of the issues in regards to Prop 218 that we're gonna have to, to, to address and deal with in the next coming years. And so what is that number for us to be sustainable? How much more money do we need to generate? Do we know that figure, right? Because how can we go to the vote if hypothetically this council decided to go to the voters? What would we be going to? I know just to increase, but how much money do we need to be sustainable?
I think that's part of the, the review or the study that needs to be done. Now, you can look at the entire sanitation, for example, or the refuse budget, if you will, and, and assume that's the full amount. But until I think the study's completed, I don't, you know, I can't.
You can't give me a big, the actual number of, you know.
And that's also gonna be dependent on the type of service levels that you want to provide. I mean, right now, we're doing as much as we can with the current staffing that we have, but if you want to change, you know, you want to go from the current levels we have to a Cadillac service or a different type of service, I mean, that's gonna really dictate, you know, the, the type of revenue measure that you take.
Correct. So when we, like, for me, talking about any, I, I, I don't support any, you know, sales tax measurement until we deal with Prop 218 issues, but there's other members on this council that are considering and looking into that and I respect that and it's great that they, they're bringing up these ideas and, but I don't even think we could even have that conversation until we actually have our house in order and actually know what we actually need to, to generate so that we're sustainable. But on the other things that I think that we can work on now is your, as I know our staff has been working on the citywide fee study, the development impact fees and I really, and then the sale of the land that, that we really need to get a, a hold of really what that is to either sell that land, you know, either to commercial or residential so that we could get property tax. It's extremely, you know, vital. I think we have like 90 or almost 100 parcels, right? And so they are not on the property tax rolls, right? So that's money that we're not generating, we're not receiving, like, why that's happening is beyond me. We need to get on that immediately because that's a way to generate revenue, you know, very quickly. And so as we move looking at 2019, 20 and beyond, on the, again, I'm not really big on always wanting to impose fees, 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 right? We're not in that business, but I get it. We need to recover our costs and I think we are in the business of recovering costs. We, we do need to do that. I don't think we have been recovering our costs at, at 100% and based on our situation, we need to get there to recover that cost. And I think doing these studies will really help us, in particular, the development impact fees. I talk about this and, you know, I'm not anti-growth, but I'm a believer in smart growth. And as we continue to wanting to build more affordable housing and more developments, there's a huge reality is that there is deferred maintenance that we already have in our sewers, our water lines, our, our roads, and moving forward, we're gonna create more infrastructure and do we have the funding to maintain that, right? And that's the big, you know, elephant in the room. We do not, you know, if you look at the amount of money that we don't have for the deferred, current deferred maintenance right now on our assets, it's huge, right? And so trying to continue to build and build without having a plan, it, you know, is, 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 it's not a, a smart thing for a city to do. And so I would just ask, and when will this development impact fee study be completed and possibly the citywide fee study? Will those be concluded by, by June or no? You guys are saying no.
Not this June, no.
Nope.
So Mayor Protim, the, the contact was just awarded to the consultant. A couple of weeks ago after it was approved by council. It's, they're moving forward on this. I think realistically, we're, we're looking at at least six, six months.
Six months.
Six to nine months because every department needs to provide all, all types of information and then they need to process that information and come up with recommendations.
So I guess there's only a couple of options that, that we currently have to possibly gener, possibly even generate any kind of revenue, you know, next year. There's nothing that I think that we possibly can for, for, for this fiscal year unless, you know, we, we look at increasing more fees to, to, in our fee schedule, which I think we took some action on, on moving in that direction, right? But that's very minimal. You know, that's not going to solve our problem. And so the other thing is the sale of the land of city-owned properties. I guess on our asset management, Fred, at what point in time, you say that that's ready to go out? At what time do we connect with economic development and when will we start identifying and making assessments of what properties we can go out to the market and say that they're, they're for sale?
Yes. So the next step is basically recommendation to purchase a technology. The company that would come in and install the technology that we need to, to run our asset management program. That I believe is gonna take another probably four months.
Okay.
To do. And then, and then after that would be conversion of the data into the system and then we'll be able to use the system. We're talking about the year from now.
Wow. One year. Okay. Then that goes out the door?
And this is more the reasons why we're, we're pitching for a two-year plan. It just gives us enough time to, to prepare.
Yeah.
And just to let you know, in, in the Public Works, this program, both GIS and asset management, it started a year and a half ago.
Correct.
So it took us a year and a half to get to this point.
And thank you, Fred. I do appreciate that, the hard work that you've put into this. And so again, and then just lastly, you know, hotel visitors' tax, we talked about that. You know, we had an opportunity at the last council meeting to generate some money hopefully tomorrow. You know, the council will approve that and we have a couple more opportunities. You know, I, I, if you can possibly give us a list, I know there is another hotel coming on first, but I also heard, I think on Harbor, there's another potential one as well. And so if we can get a list of what, of what those are and what the potential sources of revenue we possibly will generate, but again, they're not gonna be in this fiscal year. It's gonna be in 1920, right before we start, you know, getting any of the hotel bed tax. Yes, Fred?
Yes. Just to bring some lightness to the discussion here, we have a number of initiatives in play that, that I think.
The smart.
Smart, smart Santa Ana is one that if it gets approved by council, that will bring approximately $16 million a year in perpetuity. It would, you know, clean up our streets and repay, but also some, something about 20% can go to administrative services of the city. So it'll help the, help the budget. More important one is the fiber optics.
Correct.
Fiber optics, we are right to the, to the step that council needs to decide to move forward.
Forward, we do.
We have a good partner in this. This is a public-private partnership. The, the purpose of this program is to bring gigabit speed to downtown area. It will enhance economic development. We merge it as a smart program. We merge it with our utility improvement program, putting utilities out there. It would merge with our LED conversion program and it would also transfer the city's operation, the internet operation onto that fiber optics and that would kind of propel the, the process.
Process.
And also is, long-term goal would be to provide affordable internet to rest of the community, break the digital divide that exists.
And then the conversion of the lights, right?
LED conversion, LED conversion, it's $900,000 savings approximately in energy cost per year. Most of that money would be a spend for infrastructure improvement to begin with, but eventually would, would get on the books and the savings to the city. We have, we looked at the franchise, city's franchise fees with the utility companies. The franchise fees, it looks like they haven't been revisited for a long time. So years and years and years ago, the, the rates were set with the, with the utility companies. Utility companies increased the rate to the residents, but they, we don't think they pay their fair share to the city in terms of using our infrastructure. So that's something that immediately can be looked at and, you know, revised and improved, bring it up to 21st century in terms of the rates that utility companies pay. So that's one item. So these are the, you know, these are the areas that I think it can immediately help up. Sartek is another one. Sartek is, is a negative to general funds.
Fun.
It has a really good potential to at least pay for itself, but it requires some deferred maintenance to be done so we can bring the right tenants in.
And how much is that, Fred? If we were to make it a priority in this budget to get it to the standards, what would that cost be?
The, the total cost of deferred maintenance somewhere around $5 million.
$5 million.
$5 million, but, you know, we can get it to the point that we can attract, you know, good tenants downstairs, you know, the, the concessions, the Starbucks and a, and a type of venues that would bring general. And then once those are in, we'll be able to bring other tenants to the second and third and fourth floor. And that would bring it, right now it's about a million dollar. If you look at everything, it's a million dollar deficit and a drag on, on, on various funds. And that can, over the next couple of years at least, hopefully we can bring it in black and, you know, make it, you know, something that makes sense.
Great.
So that's another area.
No, thank you, Fred, for, I know you've met with each of the council members speaking about smart Santa Ana, the fiber optics and moving us into the 21st century. The other small thing that I would mention is the small cells sites, the small cells. And I know we're having those conversations as well, you know, instead of having those big, you know, cell sites that I get frustrated that I don't support anymore from these big utility companies that are not, you know, really, you know, paying their fair share. And so, but I think there's new technologies that are much smaller and when we do get the fiber optics, you know, doing IoT, for those of you that don't know what IoT means, the Internet of Things and connecting the sensors to, you know, to the light poles that we are possibly going to own when we purchase from Edison, being able to capture data and, and capture other information is going, is going to be vital. And so I, I think we're moving in the right direction, but there's not fast enough to, to, to get those revenues, but I think in the near future. But for now, I'm not sure if you guys have any other issues on the new revenue or hotel or sales tax.
I do, thank you.
Fran brought up.
Thank you, Mayor Protim, for bringing it, bringing this item up. Thank you, staff, for your reports and update. And I think one of the, the main focus is when it comes to revenue options, I, I, I think opportunity is really where we should be looking at focusing. What are, what are opportunities that we have available to us? One, the, the, I understand some of the, the fees, potential fees and additional taxes and such, frankly, that, that's, that's not all that, I don't necessarily see that as an opportunity. I, I, I see that as, as more of a, adding more of a burden to either local users, to, business partners, if you will. One of the things that I, that I really would like for us to look at is where, what are our current revenue generators? Main Place Mall, Santa Ana Auto Mall, the downtown. So looking at things from an economic development standpoint, what can we do to be increasingly become a business-friendly city? What are, what are things that we can do that are under our control to be able to help the Santa Ana Auto Mall be more successful so that they're getting more business, so that they're producing more revenue for their, their business, but ultimately taxed for the city? Main Place Mall, same thing. What's, what's taking place there? How can we be seen as a partner that, that downtown as, as well? Sometimes we need to invest some money to make some money when, with our economic development staff. We can't even really call it a department, I don't think, because we, we really don't have, you know, don't even reach those levels with regards to the number of people that we have dedicated. You know, it's, it's something that we, we, that's where we need to look at, I, I think. We need to think creatively, outside the box. What are opportunities? Green technology, looking at new industries. I, Measure BB wasn't a fan, didn't vote in support of it, but at this point, it's, it's bringing in revenue. Prop 64 having been passed, we, we need to be forward-thinking, looking at, okay, what can we do to be able to make it so that there's a balance of regulating that, that industry but at the same time creating revenue to, to, for the benefit of the community? We've started some of those electronic signs that we've approved recently to, that, that I think was a step towards being supportive of the businesses out there that are freeway close. Are there any opportunities there around revenue generation? Again, going back to our staff, when, when you're looking at trying to get, get talent, if you will, you have talent scouts, you have recruiters, you have folks out there, who do we have? What, what are we doing to promote? Who do we have? What are we doing to promote Santana, to bring some of the investment out here? You know, the opportunities at Sartek, for example. And I think our Public Works Director should be considered or included as part of the economic development team. Some, all of these ideas that he presented were new revenue-producing ideas that were outside the box from the fiber optics to the Smart Santana, Sartek as well. So it really challenges us to think about, and we did the whole economic development plan, strategic plan. There's been a lot of questions where that's at, how fruitful that is or not. Pull whatever few bits of pieces that are going to be helpful, let's do that. Or if that's not it, then scrap it and figure out a plan so we can hit some of these other elements. Hospitality, if just two small inns, they don't even reach the level of being called a hotel. This one's not even a full inn, it's an express. So, but if these two small facilities are looking to generate $1.2 million on their own, what are we doing to promote hotel development in the city of Santana? We're surrounded by freeway pretty much every edge of our city. We should, we're freeway close. And there's so many things going for us in the city. We need to be focusing on capitalizing upon that. And then it's, also, there is, when it comes to revenue, it's not just bringing in new, but it's also, your dollars are worth more when you also have reduction in costs, right? As you're reducing costs and bringing in a few more bucks, that bucks can go further. So to some of Mayor Potem's point, when it comes to improve technology, making it so that we're reducing our costs. And then, at the same time, aggressively, intentionally, creatively, looking at vehicles by which we can bring in more revenue. It becomes a win-win. At the end of the day, the increasing fees, it's not, it's counterproductive, I think, if that's where we're going to be focusing. Because your developers, you're, we're going, I was sharing with Councilman Sarmiento, and at the nonprofit that I work at, we're going through an expansion project and have gone, have had to go through planning, have had to go through permit reviews. And, you know, I've heard the stories from the developers, how long it takes to get their things reviewed. I've heard the stories on the fees that they're having to pay. My goodness, once you experience it firsthand, it becomes something else, not just a story told. But now you realize that the impact and just that the, it leaves a less-than-desired, you know, view and impression when you're hitting, being hit with fee after fee and delay after delay. So we really need to look at changing that story. So people are, have a positive experience, have a top-notch, their project is and their process is such that they are then telling the story and are looking to do more work in Santana because it becomes fruitful for them and for us as a community. So those are my two cents. And I mentioned it, Councilwoman, Mayor Potem, I'm going to have to head out in just a couple minutes. I don't know, I'm very interested in the next item, but I know I have a couple kids.
Any questions, Councilman Sarmiento?
No, just, you know, my only comment was, I mean, I think everything's been said. These are long and short-term answers that we've been giving you or suggestions. Look, the problem I have with fees is that Edison is going to be raising its rates by 3%, at least. Water District is going to be raising the rates on our users here by about 2%. We have some of the lowest AMI rates in the entire county. And so we're going to be burdening some of our residents. Developers, look, I know that they can absorb some of this, but again, if you don't have enhanced delivery service for those increased fees, then what are you getting? You're paying more for slow service, bad service, bad conditions. And it doesn't, as I always said, it doesn't cost much to have your frontline staff at the counter be polite, be welcoming. Not say no, but say, look, what can we do to help you? How can we get you there? And that's something that unfortunately some of our directors just don't get. And I get that time and time again from people that come and do business with the city. They don't mind paying for an accelerated review, but they don't get the quality of service that they do in other communities. And I don't know why we can't get that. That doesn't cost money. That's leadership. That's a change in culture. So if we can do that. Couple of things on the long-term that everybody's, you know, spoken about, the hotels, you know, it sounds good. The medicinal marijuana, you know, industry may be growing. Willowick is another one, I think Peter mentioned it, you know, earlier. Look, that's an asset that, you know, has been sitting there for both cities, Garden Grove and Santana, were both not doing all that great. Maybe this is a time that we, you know, take a forward step and maybe try to, you know, entertain or host a conversation on that. On the short-term, those 90 parcels that we've spoken about, how many of those are usable? I mean, I think when I spoke to our folks in community development, maybe five of them were usable parcels. Because most of them were remnant lands that were, you know, residuals from, you know, Caltrans and other places and other expansions that we had. And they just weren't usable plots. So if you can distill what those 90 are and say, okay, here are the real sellable parcels. Because some of them aren't worth that much. They're just small slivers and you can't do anything on them. The other short-term solution is, what are we subsidizing and is it really important for us to continue doing that, like Bowers? I love the museum. I mean, I think it's a great asset to have in the city. What's the level of subsidy that we provide? And can that nonprofit that's operating be able to sustain itself for a short term as we get our house in order? And so, you know, it's a tough conversation. I mean, I don't want to cut anybody off, but maybe there's adjustments that can be made. And I think the subsidy was about a million and a half, if I'm not mistaken.
Like 1.3.
You know, look, it's a lot of money. It's a great asset. I love it. But we have to be realistic with ourselves and live within our means. So let's look at those and we tried, guys. I know we had, you know, we had the old YMCA and the Third and Broadway. I think the three of us moved it when we were on a committee years ago because we saw this coming and we saw the potential of those two properties.
Couldn't get it done.
So, you know, we tried, you know, we tried and it's still, they're both still sitting there, so anyways, with that.
If I can just recommend, if we can go back to items three and four, I know council member-
I know he does have to go, yes, but he wanted to be on this nine, this final one. Yeah, we need to select a chair and a vice chair and then review the bylaws. So we need to do a selection of chair, vice chair.
I'll make a motion to appoint or to nominate Mayor Potem.
I'll second. I was going to nominate either Councilman Sarmiento or Councilwoman Martinez, whoever won the arm wrestling contest.
I wasn't finished. Chair and vice chair, Councilman Benavides, so that was my motion.
No opposition? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great. An approval of the bylaws? Can I get them?
Second.
First and second, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes. So now going on to nine, before we get comments, because Councilman Benavides needs to go and he's interested. I brought up this cooperative business, worker cooperative business ordinance because I've been asking where are we at with the economic strategic plan and I've kind of lost, like, hope on that plan. And so I wanted to bring forward, for us to move forward with doing this cooperative business, which primarily supports the idea of worker cooperatives, businesses that are owned and democratically controlled by workers as a key part of the city's economic development strategy moving forward. So the worker cooperative model has been proven to be an effective tool for creating and maintaining sustainable, dignified jobs, generating wealth, improving the quality of life of workers and promoting community and local economic development, particularly for people who lack access to conventional means of business ownership. So the direction that I wanted to, for the council, for the city, give the city manager was to develop recommendations to support local worker cooperatives, particularly ones that target areas in need of Santa Ana, such as food deserts. It also directs the city manager to review the city's small business program loan applications and other materials to ensure that worker cooperatives can access those on the same basis as comparable to conventional businesses. Direct the city manager to also develop recommendations on how to reach out to existing business owners and present worker cooperative conversions as a retirement or succession plan for older business owners. Direct the city manager to review city procurement and contracting procedures for any possible barriers to worker cooperatives to bid on city contracts. And then there are two models that I wanted for us to look at, is the city of Oakland and Berkeley. And then also, Anna from Building Healthy Communities sent an email today that I haven't had a chance to respond or look at because I've been in meetings all day. And so I will forward those to staff as well. But that was the intent of this ordinance. The city currently has various worker cooperatives here currently working now. And they've been very successful. And I think that's a model that we need to move forward to continue and support. And I know that there are various speakers that want to speak about their worker cooperatives. And so, Davi, do you want to hear from some of them before you have to go? Or do you have any comments that you would like to point out before or add before you leave?
No, it does, I, I'm not going to unfortunately, I don't know if we can, if we can, it's unfortunate folks have been waiting to speak.
We have one, two, three, four, six.
Yeah, unfortunately, I've got kids waiting for me right now, so I'm going to have to go. And I'm not going to be able to benefit from the comments from the audience. It is a topic, a subject, as you explained it, that I think merits our, some follow-up. And whether it be bringing it back so we have more extended conversation, even if it's calling a special of the committee or having discussion at council or whatever you see fit.
I think we need to bring it back here to have a full-on, you know, fleshed-out process before we bring it up there, so there's not that much questions.
So, yeah, so then that's what I would, yeah, would recommend. Because I think it does, it does have merit, yeah, further action and support by the city and council. And one quick comment that I did want to make, we did discuss some about surplus land. And I know we've been holding some that right now doesn't necessarily, hasn't been benefiting anyone as they've been sitting there other than being a cost to the city to maintain. There have been some efforts that have been made by members of the community to present to the city ways that we can take some of those, that land and turn it into an asset for the long-term to the city. So I just want to make sure that we continue to have that in mind. There's the community land trust that has been worked on by both, Deputy Manager has been a part of some of those discussions and has some background and some research there. And been members of the community, including members from Building Healthy Communities, that also has had some input with regard to this last item that I just would want to make sure that we look at. Once there is a benefit to having properties off our rolls, that they're, and that they're no longer liability to us. But at the same time, once it's gone, they're gone for good and we can no longer have the city, that the community benefit from them if they're in some way a community asset, some type of community land. So I think it's just a balance here that we need to look at. And with that, I do apologize, but I am going to have to-
Okay, great. Thank you, Councilman Benavides. So let's, if we could have a minute for each of the speakers, if you guys want to come up. And Laura Pantoja, Gemma Appolino, Leslie, Adrian, Anna, Reina, and Carlos. Laura? Oh, she had to leave. Gemma? Appolino? Please, see?
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Apolonia Cortez, soy residente de la ciudad de Santana. Y este, soy miembro de la cooperativa Tierra y Dignidad. Pero también soy también de miembro de la cooperativa Crece, el cual se dedica a cultivos orgánicos. Y bueno, estamos aquí para apoyar la ordenanza. Creemos que este es un gran paso y muy importante para nuestra ciudad y para nuestros residentes. Y este, pero queremos que se haga en un lenguaje que realmente puedas, puede ser consistente e incluyente para nuestra comunidad, ya que nuestra comunidad es mayormente latina. Y creemos que necesitamos que esta ordenanza tenga la oportunidad de que sea favorecida a nuestra comunidad. Y también es importante ahora más que nunca que tengamos el apoyo de nuestros oficiales electos. Los derechos de nuestros migrantes no solo se deben ver como una ciudad santuario, pero también debemos asegurar que esta oportunidad para prosperar. Queremos trabajar con ustedes. Inclúyanos en sus conversaciones para estructurar esta ordenanza. Gracias. Buenas tardes.
Good evening. My name is Apolonia Cortez. I'm a member of this community and also part of the cooperative Crece, which does organic produce, which grows organic food in the city. We are here to support the ordinance and think it's a good step forward. And also believe that we want to be involved and think it's a good avenue in support of our immigrant community. And we think this is an added step to a sanctuary ordinance that can allow for the support of our communities.
Sí, este, soy Adrián y pues también vengo aquí apoyando también la ordenanza de estos negocios de las cooperativas. Y sentimos que esto es un buen paso, ya que puede ser exitoso y va a ser exitoso.
My name is Adrián. I'm also here in support of this ordinance. We think it's a good step. We think it'll be very successful.
Creemos que esto debe de tener pues un lenguaje fuerte, incluyente en las comunidades para que tengan más apoyo y necesitan este apoyo.
We think that it can have strong language and be inclusive of our communities because there are other communities that need the most support.
Y nos gustaría que se incluyera lo siguiente, pues el desarrollo económico experto en la ciudad para poder apoyar la promoción de las cooperativas como una estrategia de desarrollo económico.
We think it ought to include points such as making sure the city develops expert knowledge of how to promote cooperatives as a strategy around economic development.
También utilizar el papel de la ciudad para convocar conexiones estratégicas dentro de un ecosistema de cooperativas.
For the city to be able to utilize its role as a convener to help to bring more strategic conversations and allies.
Proveer fondos de becas para incubación y asistencia técnica en un enfoque de cooperativas en redes de cooperativas.
And provide funds for support in incubation and technical assistance for cooperatives.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Anna, you're next, followed by Reina, and then Carlos.
Awesome. Thank you. Good evening. Just also, in support of this is a good step, is a good ordinance. My name is Anna Urzua with the Building Healthy Communities. I wanted to share with you that as part of a long-term visioning, the work of supporting worker cooperatives came up in the strategies towards a healthy community. And that's because not only do we need to be able to address immediate needs such as housing, such as parks and open space, but we also need to see viable options for families to increase their incomes and cooperatives can be that. We are seeing a lot of support in the last, in the final years of the Building Healthy Communities towards having strategies that assure sustainability for our families and for many of the policy work that we've been doing over the years. And we think this is a big one. I just wanted to offer that over the last two years since the Building Healthy Communities saw this as a focus, we've been incubating a number of cooperatives. So we have about five cooperatives that have received starting funds from the Building Healthy Communities. We also facilitated a course for worker cooperatives, an eight-week course with some of the folks in the national networks of worker cooperatives. And we've been offering technical assistance since in partnership with other providers. And we are part of several networks of worker cooperatives, including the Democracy at Work Institute and partner with organizations in the Bay Area and with another network called the Business Alliance for Local Economies. So we offer ourselves as a resource also in the development of this cooperative, and I, I'm sorry, this ordinance. And I brought model language as a draft that has been utilized in Oakland, as Mayor Potem mentioned. And I bring this to your disposal. I also had a few comments on the, because it was a very enlightening conversation around the budget and definitely just the complexities around the jail. I do want to mention that the development impact fee was talked about a lot and we got to sit in with the planning department to understand a little bit more about it. And we certainly feel that, as Mayor Potem mentioned, it's not, it's more of like making back some of the costs of development. Because as, you know, we have seen, there have been some projects that haven't assumed the costs, the real costs that they provide. And that's the wear and tear on infrastructure and that's being able to provide amenities that come as a strain when they have their, when they develop their projects. So the development impact fee, we see as a viable option. At the same time, we can't ignore the rising costs of living created and the displacement that inevitably comes. that inevitably comes that affects our most vulnerable communities, so we couldn't say that. So definitely agree, how do we, you know, how can the development impact fees be a resource to bring in revenue? What can be improved in the services provided? But also, how do we make sure that we are protecting vulnerable communities? And there are a number of policies we can put into place on that as well. And that's it, just thank you for, for your work. You work a lot as council members, and you have been for several years. So it's good to be here with you all, and just offering whatever we can.
Great, thank you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Reina Mendoza, y mi cooperativa se llama Manos Unidas Creando Arte. Y está formada por mujeres residentes de Santana, y trabajamos con el reciclaje, y tenemos dos años tratando de salir adelante, que reconozcan nuestros talentos y que nos incluyan en la ordenanza para los negocios cooperativos.
Good evening, my name is Reina Mendoza. I am here with Cooperativa Manos Unidas Creando Arte. We are a cooperative formed of women of the city of Santana, and we work with recycled materials. We have two years that we've been working and trying to advance our families in order to be recognized for our talents and to be included in an ordinance like this for the city.
Y sentimos que es un buen paso, y que para ser más exitosos deben tener lenguaje fuerte incluyendo en las comunidades. Y se incluya lo siguiente en el lenguaje de la ordenanza.
And we think that this is a strong step forward, and believe that this ought to be inclusive of our communities, and we think that you should include some specific language also in the ordinance.
Y así poder apoyar la promoción de cooperativas como una estrategia del desarrollo económico.
And in this way, be able to promote cooperatives as an important strategy in economic development.
Y convocar conexiones estratégicas dentro del ecosistema de cooperativas.
And be able to convene strategies to grow the work around cooperatives.
Proveer fondos para becas, incubación, asistencia técnica, con un enfoque en cooperativas o redes de cooperativas.
And grow the funds and available for incubation and technical assistance to cooperatives.
Es todo, gracias por su atención.
Thank you for your attention.
Gracias, thank you. So Robert, I just sent you over the email that Anna sent over, and I also sent you my notes that I took, and I would, I would say that, you know, when I decided to bring this ordinance, I would, I would tell you that it's not something that came to mind, and I would, I just told, we have one more speaker, oh, Carlos! Oh, sorry! Oh, ándale, Carlos!
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Carlos Melendez. Soy residente de la ciudad de Santana por más de 20 años, es el único lugar donde he vivido en este país. Y este, yo también represento parte de la comunidad, y estamos trabajando, he escuchado cosas muy buenas de la ciudad. El problema económico es serio, pero se puede solucionar. No lo vamos a morir en ese problema, y lo que venimos a pedir es que ustedes apoyen el movimiento cooperativista que está desarrollándose aquí en la ciudad. Como Apolonia dijo, yo también soy miembro de la cooperativa Tierra y Dignidad, pero hay otras cooperativas que están, este, formándose y están desarrollándose, y lo que nosotros pedimos es que ustedes nos permitan colaborar con la solución económica que estamos afrontando en este momento. Si ustedes fomentan las cooperativas, nosotros vamos a producir también, y podemos colaborar al desarrollo de la ciudad. Solo pedimos que nos den este, incentivos para podernos desarrollar, así como cualquier otro negocio que ustedes han hablado aquí. Necesitamos ampliar nuestra terminal, Hanahay tiene la de ellos, nosotros tenemos la de nosotros, que es la estación, podemos mejorarla y sacarle mucho provecho. Así nosotros también queremos participar en el desarrollo y la solución de los problemas económicos de la ciudad. Solo queremos que ustedes nos escuchen, nos apoyen, y una inversión es diferente de un gasto. De una inversión se van a sacar utilidades y provecho. Entonces queremos que nos ayuden y que nos apoyen, y den las facilidades, así como cualquier otro negocio, van a ser para que podamos levantar nuestra ciudad. Gracias.
Let me try. Good evening, my name is Carlos. I'm a resident of the city, I've lived here for 20 years, this is the only place where I have lived in this, in the United States, is Santana. I am also a member of the cooperativa Tierra y Dignidad, as Apolonia mentioned. I came to stress the importance of cooperative work as a strategy to develop our economy, and I believe that it's an investment in our communities goes a long way, and we urge you to support the, and this is a viable economic strategy for our families. We think a lot of good things were mentioned today, including strategies for economic development. I think our transit center can improve also, our train station, and some really good ways of saying, you know, this is an important strategy for economic development. Thank you.
Okay, great. Any comments, Councilman Sarmiento?
None, thank you for bringing this forward, Mayor Potem.
Great, and just again, I would just, I sent to Robert the information that I have put together, of who to contact, the information that Anna presented, and then hopefully that if you and staff can work possibly with them, and look at a couple options of the ordinance, and then bring it forward back to this committee, so that we can take some next steps forward and have a solid ordinance before we bring forward to the city council. The last thing we want to do is go back to an ad hoc and continue the item, and that's the last thing I want to do, and so I think it's important for us to get this done and get the work done here with this committee moving forward. And then lastly, you know, I would say that this was my idea, but it really wasn't the idea that came to me, you know, it was really my boyfriend, he is a big supporter of worker cooperatives, and big, and he kept telling me, where are you at with your strategic plan? You've been talking about your economic strategic plan, but there hasn't been anything, Michelle. And I'm like, I don't know where we're at, to be honest with you, and he's like, look, you need to look at worker cooperatives, there really are the future of economic development and how to spur and really create sustainability within your own community here in Santa Ana. And he said we had a perfect, perfect opportunity, and I mentioned to him the various cooperatives that have already started in the community, but not giving them the opportunities to compete with traditional conventional businesses. And so this is a good opportunity for us, I believe, moving forward, as you see, a lot of the folks that we've been working with are really trying to move beyond the traditional means of employment, but trying to be sustainable and self-sufficient. And I think that's a goal that the city hopes and wishes for, you know, our residents in our community as we move forward, not just the traditional capitalism and basic, you know, corporate America and small business, but giving them the opportunity to have ownership and really create opportunities not only for them, but for their community as well. And so, if we can bring that forward towards our next meeting would be fantastic, Robert, and greatly appreciated, and I think we are, staff comments, Robert?
Just in the interest of time, I do want to just thank the committee for giving us the opportunity to have the discussion. Budget is extremely important, and I think some of the decisions that were made here were critical for us to be able to produce a balanced budget, so thank you.
Fantastic, any lasting comments, Fred? Chief Schnoval? Fantastic, committee member comments?
Forever hold your peace, if you don't see me.
Fantastic, future agenda, I'll send those to you, because I'm exhausted, I've been here since 10, it's been a long day of work here, bye.